I know, I talked about it during the magical meeting.
Ah, on your right.
He didn't do review either. He didn't have time.
No.
Because he found out about it.
Go away. I was kind of mad, but according to Fran today, he said, um, in a day or two.
I'm going to call this Borough of Oradell Planning Board meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. It's 7:30. Notice of this meeting was published in the official newspaper, prominently posted in Borough Hall and filed with the clerk in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call. Mr. Forte.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Kang.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Councilman Carnaval.
Here.
Mr. Darian.
Here.
Mayor Coth.
Here.
And Chairman Flegging.
Here. I'll ask the mayor to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Okay, the next item is the approval of planning board minutes. Unfortunately, we didn't get a copy of those minutes before the meeting, so I'm going to table that until we meet again in January. And I'll move on to commu- committee reports, subdivision, site drainage, and soil moving. Mr. Carnaval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two applications this evening. The first one is calendar number 158-24 subdivision Murphy, 798 East Drive. I'd ask the applicants to come up to testify. How are you?
Good evening. Thomas J. Barrett for the applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Murphy.
Great.
This is a minor subdivision application for the property at 798 East Drive.
Could you just speak into the mic?
Yeah.
Or move closer. Sit down.
Mike, does he need to be sworn in?
Well, he's not testifying. He's the attorney. He's just presenting an overview, correct?
Correct.
I always ask so.
And then I'll call my witnesses.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, so it's an oversized lot. It's 37,000 square feet, and it's the application divided into two lots, one on which the existing house sits of 21,835 square feet, and then the adjoining property would be 15,290 square feet, which is less than required by your ordinance, and hence we require a variance for lot size. As Mr. Murphy can testify, there are no current plans for the development of the property. There's no contract. It's just a simple application to subdivide the property and then see what the future brings. I do have with me tonight our engineer, Sean McClellan, and I'm going to have him as our first witness. Second witness will be Joe Burgess of Burgess Associates, our planner, and then I'll finish up just with Mr. Murphy to confirm what I've told you. So at this point, I'd like to call upon Sean McClellan. There you are.
Good evening.
Good evening, Sean. While you're setting up, you swear that the testimony you're going to give this evening is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
And you're testifying in your expert capacity as a...
Civil engineer.
And have you appeared before this board before?
I have once.
You have to speak into the mic, please.
I've been out here once over the summer.
Okay. Does the board have any objection to permitting the testimony of Mr. McClellan as an expert civil engineer?
I have no objection.
Mr. McClellan, please proceed.
Is that your subdivision map?
It is.
Perhaps we should have that marked as A1.
A1? So marked.
And the date on the plan?
It's a minor subdivision for Richard Murphy, and it's dated October 15, 2024.
And you prepared the plan?
I did.
And do you tell the board what's being proposed?
Sure. So we have a kind of a unique lot that's on East Drive, also fronts on Golf Place. As Mr. Barrett mentioned, it's almost twice the size of what's required. The requirement's 18,750, and we have 37,125, so just short of double. We are looking to subdivide it into two pieces. What I would label as 1.02 is the lot with the existing home. That we have an area of 21,835, and the lot that's shown is 1.01, which is would be vacant, that's 15,290 square feet. That's where we require the variance because 18,750 square feet is required.
And on the, I believe it was 1.01 on which the existing house sits?
1.02.
1.02. Does that, if the board were to see fit to grant the subdivision, does that meet all of the requirements of the borough?
It does. Even though we are taking about 15,000 square feet off of the entire lot, we still meet all the bulk requirements, the impervious coverage, the building coverage, and all the setbacks.
And how much building coverage is there if the subdivision were approved?
Currently, under the existing conditions, the building coverage is 10.5%. If the subdivision was approved, it would go to 17.8%, and we're allowed 25%, so we're still well under the building coverage.
And in terms of the floor area ratio?
The floor area ratio, I can't calculate. I'm not an architect, but based on it being a one-story dwelling, that would be approximately the same as the footprint, so that would be approximately 3,900 square feet, and we're allowed to have 4,434 square feet.
So again, under the borough's requirements?
Correct.
No further questions of Mr. McClellan?
I'll start with our professionals. Dave, do you have any questions?
Sure, I do have a couple of questions. I mean, just for the record, we didn't perform a formal review on this. We did review it last minute from the borough just before the holidays, so I didn't prepare a formal reviewer, so I apologize for that, but I do have a couple of questions I know that we had flagged on Wednesday. Sorry, my microphone is not on. So as far as the subdivision plan, I guess the question is, who prepared the subdivision plan?
I prepared it. It's also been signed by a surveyor, licensed surveyor as well.
Is that in the documents that the borough has, or is that something?
Yes.
It was delivered yesterday to the borough.
Okay.
And they confirmed it with Catherine from your office?
Okay. All right, I didn't see it myself, but you're telling me that it's signed by the surveyor because per the state regulations, a minor subdivision, or any subdivision, must be prepared by a licensed surveyor. As far as the proposed lot, the vacant lot, what's, you know, it's an undersized lot. Obviously, you have the setbacks and stuff shown on there. Have you looked at what could potentially be built on that property?
We showed the building envelope as far as what type of house and size and everything. We haven't explored that option.
Okay. What about the existing terrain of the property?
Yeah, so it would be, it's steep from Golf Place until you get back into the building envelope, so there would be, the driveway would, you know, kind of have to be shaped in a way where it would comply with the ordinance for the driveway slope.
Gotcha. Would the site be able to accommodate stormwater measures?
That would be part of what we would propose after the home was built as far as the soil moving application.
Right, but I guess could, I guess, you know, for the board's gratification, I mean, it's obviously they're here to approve a subdivision, don't want to approve us, you know, a lot that's undersized that can't be built on. It would be beneficial to have some sort of information for them just to kind of be able to understand if we could build on the property and if it is suitable for that.
Well, building the envelope, if you were to have a house that would face on Golf Place, you know, you can have a house that's 60 wide by 30 feet. You can have about 1,800 square foot footprint and also have plenty of room in the rear for drainage facility.
So you could build a fully compliant house on the property?
Correct, with room for drainage improvements.
So the only variance that you'd be requesting would be the undersized lot?
Correct.
Okay, I have no other questions at the moment, Chairman.
Steve?
Yes, we didn't send to the borough engineer just for the fact that it was a minor subdivision. They're not proposing anything on the lots now, but Dave did have a good statement or question in regards to will the house be compliant for the property, and so all they're going after is the minimum lot coverage or the lack thereof. So other than that, I have no other problems.
Okay. Caroline?
Thank you. Just looking at the subdivision plan, was the subdivision line drawn in its current location due to the existing improvements on, I guess, what will be Lot 1.02? And I mean, is, I'm asking, is there, would there have been a way to draw the subdivision line so that the lots are a little bit more equal in area?
Yeah, it was, that line was based off of having a conforming rear yard for Lot 1.02. Currently, it's at, you're allowed 25, and we're at 27.7, so that's how we came up with that location.
So was there any flexibility with respect to the location of the subdivision line that would involve this, that would involve an additional variance to create a lot that's somewhat more conforming than the one that's proposed?
We could get, we can maintain the rear yard setback and also get more lot area onto 1.01, but it would be, the lot would have to kind of be jogged, and we thought it would be better to have one single line. If we came...
Speak into the mic, please.
I can carry it with me here?
Yeah.
If we came in the same direction as we come here, and then we, about halfway, we did something like this, we'd be able to pick up a few more square feet. We preferred to keep the, just one subdivision line instead of having two.
I mean, you'd have one subdivision line. It just wouldn't...
We'd have a jog in it, yes.
You mean it would be like a zigzag when you say a jog?
Just, um, give it a turn. It'd be more like, it would come along the same line, and then at some point, it would come like, come like this.
Sorry.
Something like that. So it would come along as I have it, and then come more of an angle towards Golf Place.
And then would that, that also have maintained the 25-foot rear yard setback that you were concerned about with what I guess would be Lot 1.02?
Yes, it's, we would still be able to maintain 25-yard setback.
So the options were or are with respect to the subdivision line, that what was proposed, I guess you called it the jog line, or requesting a variance for the improvements that, on what would be Lot 1.02, or an encroachment that you would be creating? Is that what you're testifying to?
No, the answer to your question is, we wanted to make sure we didn't, we wanted to maintain a 25-yard rear setback, which we were at 20.7.7. We could keep, we can maintain that and get a little bit more lot area onto 1.01 by putting a jog in the property line. We came up with, we thought the best solution was to keep the proposed property line as a single line.
Would that affect the 20-yard, the proposed setback on the 1.01?
We can maintain the 25-foot setback by putting the jog in and getting larger area onto Golf Place. As far as, what we liked, the look of the subdivision best was just to have a single line across.
Okay. I mean, obviously, it's your, it's your application. That's not, I'm not trying to interfere in that. I'm just asking some questions because you do have two proposed lot areas that are, you know, have some room between them. This isn't a situation where you have, you know, for example, an 18,000 and 19,000 square foot lot.
Right.
So that's what's drawing into my attention. And similar, Mr. Chairman, to the engineer, we did not prepare a review or anything of that nature. We're sort of hearing it tonight. So, all right, I was just trying to ascertain whether there was an opportunity for the other lot to be more conforming with respect to lot area because I believe, you know, because that is a variance.
Mr. McClellan, can you estimate how many additional square feet would be added if you had the jog that you spoke about?
Sure, I can. Just give me a sec.
Not going to be very much.
Probably get about... Probably about 1,300, 1,400 extra square feet.
I'm sorry, 1,300 or 1,400 extra, is that what you said?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have for right now.
Mike, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
I'll open it up to the members of the board if anybody has any questions. Mr. McClellan?
Do you want to go down the line?
Okay, we can do that. Any questions?
No.
No questions? No questions. I'm going to skip over for now. Any questions?
I just have one. Do you know uphand what the slope is between the front yard setback and the right-of-way line?
It's about 26%.
26%. Where would you see, not that it's relative to the subdivision, where would you see a driveway happening in this? Is that off of Golf Place, obviously, but is it more favorable to one side or the other of the proposed lot?
It'd be more favorable to come more towards the western side because the grade's higher here, so if you came down from here, you'd have to kind of snake it or S it up, so it'd be, it'd be more favorable to come up closer to the proposed property line.
Yeah, and so I guess the follow-up question I would have is, do you think there's adequate room there between the building envelope and the right-of-way line to be able to construct that infrastructure, if you would, to negotiate the slope?
Yeah, it would just, there'd have to be, you know, elevation change between the first floor and the garage. You'd probably have a couple more steps than normal to get the garage down a little bit to negotiate the steepness.
Okay, thank you.
So, Ms. Ritter, you know, I was considering the jog line versus the straight line, if I can call it that, and I'm not going to use "um" tonight, even though I did twice. Excuse me. I noticed that the math is very tight, so if you were to give from the first property, which is Lot 1.02, extra land to Lot 1.01 in order to make that lot compliant, you need around 3,085 square feet, and if you took 3,085 square feet away from the first lot, there's just not enough. I think the second lot would, if you took the maximum amount you could from the, from 1.02 and still be compliant with the size, you'd be roughly 500 square feet too small for Lot 1.01. So it looks like no matter what we do, we're going to be stuck with a non-conforming lot size. The math doesn't, regardless of how it's shaped.
That's, that's 100, you're 100% correct. The math...
One side or the other.
The math doesn't lie, as they say.
I'm terrible with describing math, so, but yeah, the numbers is off. So...
Does Tom want to say anything?
I don't have anything right now. I mean, I'm like, those same thoughts were kind of going through my head, and obviously, I don't know if it's in front of this board, it's not our consideration, but certainly the driveway and how that would play into the salt, but that's not what you're asking right here.
It's just a subdivision. Ed? Mr. Hayes?
No.
No comment?
I have another question.
Oh, sure.
Either for the engineer or for Mr. Depkin, if this property were to be subdivided and someone were to build on the new lot, would the old lot have to be brought up to stormwater management standards?
When you say the old lot...
1.02.
Uh, no. Lot 1.02 would remain as is today, and essentially Lot 1.01, the new lot, when, or if the time came that they built on it, they would have to conform with the stormwater requirements.
Is that a consideration, something we should consider?
As far as having something on Lot 1.02?
Yeah.
I mean, even if it's shot how it is today or subdivided, they're not increasing any impervious coverage, so they wouldn't be required to do anything on that. If they did in the future come back to do additional impervious coverage on the property, then that would be the time that they would have to address that.
Okay.
Okay. I'm at a loss that our professionals, our engineer and planner, didn't get this ahead of time and issue a report to the board.
We didn't send it to them because it was just a subdivision line. A lot of the questions you're asking now will come through with soil moving and the construction project when they propose a dwelling. They do have a good point in regards to reducing or changing the subdivision line to get a little bit more compliance, but other than that, most of the questions you're asking will, will come through soil moving.
Well, I, my suggestion would be, and I don't like to protract things, but I would suggest to the board that we ask our professionals to review it and issue a report to us, and so that we have, you know, not spur of the moment comments, and we can give it the due diligence that it needs, and we can review it again next month. That would be my recommendation.
I would, Mr. Chairman, I would ask our professionals, would a examination and a report, do you feel, be of benefit to the board to have that written evaluation of the project?
You know, from the engineering side and the surveying side, you know, it would be nice to have the opportunity to do the review so you guys would have the information that we're going through. It would have also afforded the applicant an opportunity to potentially look to see what they could lay out on the property to demonstrate to you guys, because once this, once the subdivision, assuming you guys were to approve the minor subdivision, you're stuck with that lot, whether they can build on it or not. So having that information before you, in my opinion, is beneficial to make an educated decision if it makes sense to have that, and if that is a buildable lot.
Caroline, from your perspective?
So, I'm, you know, we'd be happy to review it on, you know, for the board. I, we, I looked at the plans tonight before coming here, and, you know, I'm hearing the testimony for the first time as well, so that's been my experience with it, respectfully, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, Councilman.
Well, I guess we should hear from the members of the board what their position is, and, Mr. Chairman, and then make a decision?
Sure.
Okay. We'll go down.
I don't have any more questions. I think, actually, my only question is, is this unusual in the Town of Oradell for this lot's size?
No, I was, we were asking if...
Do I need more information?
Well, no, the chairman recommended that we carry this over until next month so that our professionals can prepare a formal written report. Would you support that?
I would support that.
Okay. Man?
I would support the chairman's recommendation.
I would also support the chair's position. Thanks for all, it's our professionals.
Okay. Ed? Might not have heard, oh, Dan, Greg, I'm sorry.
Yes. Yeah, I still have questions, so I know it's inconvenient and I feel bad, but at the same time, I don't think it would be right for us to rush to judgment not having the process been completed properly.
Okay. So let me just ask a logistical question. Mike, would it make sense to hear the remainder of the testimony or just to carry everything over until next month? We can read the reports from our planner and our engineer and then resume the testimony accordingly?
Yeah, I think what I would recommend is what the normal procedure would be, which would be to have the professionals review it, and then the application would be heard. So to the extent that portions of the application, Mr. Burgess, Mr. Murphy, haven't been heard, they would come back. Mr. McClellan would come back if there's questions raised by the report, so I would probably call this application to a halt tonight to let the professionals do what they need to do.
Okay, thank you. So I think you have the support of the board, Mr. Chairman, so we'll recommend that we carry this over until next month?
Mr. Chairman, we would like our planner to testify, though. I don't see the harm in that.
I'd like the board to have the benefit of the professionals', you know, review so that if they have questions for the planner, that they're properly prepared, because I'm not, I'm not a fan of hasty decision-making, so no.
So we'll move on to the next...
So we will... Yeah, so I'll make a motion to carry this application, calendar number 158-24 subdivision 798 East Drive, to next month.
I'll second that.
Steve, roll call.
Okay, Mr. Snyder, he's filling in for Mr. Dressel. Yes. Yes, oh, thank you. Mr. Kang, Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Carnaval?
Yes.
Mayor Coth?
Yes.
Mr. Darian?
Yes.
Mr. Flegging?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Enjoy the holidays, and we'll see you next year.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move on to the second application for this evening, calendar number 159-24, site plan and variance relief, 90 Kinder Comack Road. I'd ask the applicants to come up for your testimony.
Thank you. Make sure your mic's on.
Yeah.
Welcome, Counselor. If you could introduce yourself.
Give me one second, Mr. Chairman. Can we just confirm the date of the next meeting?
Yeah, we have a, we have it for January 7th right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, council. My name is Colin Quinn. I'm attorney for the applicant, HKNHKNI, is also known as Royal Wine Spirits II. I have with me this evening multiple witnesses, the architect, Joe Sarah, will testify first, and who would please approach. Mr. Sarah, are you here?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we have a colorized rendering that Mr. Sarah's put on his easel there, and we have several loose copies to hand around to the board. It wasn't part of our original package, but it'd be a... Would it be acceptable if we submitted, same for circulation, so everyone can get a chance to view it?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, thanks.
Mike, I have a question. So I have a family member, not immediate, but an aunt who's got her feet in directly behind this property. Would you recommend, please, that I recuse myself from this application?
They're on the side of caution, yes.
It's okay.
Is this Sarr, the spelling of your last name, sir?
S.A.R.R.A.
And the testimony you're about to give this evening is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is.
Licensed architect of the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
What year were you licensed, sir?
2000, November, my first, 2000.
That's terrific, very good. And then, have you appeared before this board before?
Many years ago, yes, I have.
Okay. Does the board have any objection to permitting the testimony of Mrs. Sarr as an expert in his field of architecture? No objection, okay, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for accepting Mr. Sarr as an expert. He has testified in Oradell on multiple occasions in the past, and the building is located in Oradell. Mr. Sarr, if you please, can you direct the board's attention to what you have put on your easel to the right? And if you would, kindly describe that particular rendering.
These are three colored renderings of the proposed new building at 90 Kendrick Mac Road for the Royal Wine and Spirits Store. They're currently in town. The clients are looking to erect a new building on the old Cup Cap Joe's property and vacant land adjacent to it.
Mr. Sarr, if you would, if you can please approach the easel and describe for the board's benefit and for the public exactly, just an overview of the outside exterior.
Do you want to take the mic?
Colin, A1.
Counsel, yes, if you would please mark that as A1.
Can you hear me? We're proposing a one-story brick building on the Kendrick Mac side, the west side, and then the north side. Would be brick cinnamon in color, cinnamon red, to match a lot of the current buildings in Oradell along the central business district. The black base would be black brick, would accent the base, and an accent line along the top. Proposing a drive-it cornice to tie in a lot of the older buildings in town. A standing seam hunter green mansard roof over the windows. All the storefront system will be black anodized. And on, around the backside will be similar color, but in a drive-it system. Both the east side and then the south side of the building.
Sorry, what was the system you said?
Drive-it, or insulated, like a stucco system. We're gonna have decorative goose neck low-light sconces along the west elevation and the north elevation.
Can you describe the color of the lights and the other accessories on the building?
The decorative lights are gonna be black to match the trim work that we're proposing. And the rear lights that are required by code for egress doors are gonna be lights that are directed down, that have minimal access.
Please continue with your description, sir.
The height of the building is with, conforming with the ordinances of Oradell in height, so there, no variance is needed for height. And we are proposing a little height for accent for the entrance. And the signage is all within Oradell's awning and signage code.
Is there anything, Mr. Sarr, else on this rendering which you wish to describe to the board? If we directed your plans?
Like I said, the signage is gonna conform to all the requirements. It will be four colors or less. And right now, the four colors that are on the rendering are yellow, which is a little different from their existing signage. We felt that red might blend too much with the cinnamon red brick, so we used a yellow or gold. The wine glass has a burgundy wine in there, which is similar to theirs. The ampersand in between is green, matches their current signage. And then the glass will be like a blue color, so.
Thank you, Mr. Sarr. I'm gonna ask you to please take a look at your plans and we'll identify those to the board.
Oh, thank you.
Suppose you mark this as A2?
Yes.
Architectural plans of Scott Laurie. Okay, Mr. Sarr, if you would, would you please describe the depiction that you have up on your easel and stuff on the PDFs up on the screen and the plans are in everyone's hands?
Yes.
Describe the sheet that's in front of you and start at the beginning. Tell everyone what this is.
This is the proposed first floor plan of the Wine and Spirits Store. The overall footprint of the building is 4,400 square feet, but the interior usable square footage is 4,200 square feet, as depicted on the site engineer's drawings. It consists of a controlled entry for airlock, for, to keep out the cold weather. You walk in, you have a customer counter, you have all the liquor display throughout, and then a large beverage cooler in the rear. Also included is a handicap bathroom, an office, and a very small wine tasting area for customers that come in and wanna try wine. As per comments directed from the fire marshal, the building will be fully sprinkled basement and first floor, and we have added a secondary door right behind the office that will egress directly outside.
Mr. Sarr, do you have a copy of your revised drawing that shows that secondary ingress egress door?
Right there, yes.
Have you circulated that plans among the board members?
No, I haven't.
Would you do that, please, sir, at this time? Counsel, I'd like to have this amendment to the architectural site plan marked as A-3. It's simply a modification of the existing interior layout of the first floor. This reflects the addition of a secondary ingress egress door. Directly in response to both the professional comments and the fire officials' comments relevant to the project itself.
Can you send my office PDF of that?
Yes, certainly, yes, ma'am.
Counselor, if you could just move the microphone a little closer to you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sarr, what's been marked as A-3, we've now handed out to the board members. If you would please describe exactly what you have in mind identifying the location and main site composition, these four amendments.
Yeah, the drawing that was handed, is the only change that was made from what you had originally, is we added the second means of egress on the opposite side of the building for code and fire safety. It was a comment from the fire marshal. The owners are also gonna fully sprinkler the building, first and second floor, as per his comments. But that's the only change to the drawing that was handed out, was that door was added.
Is there anything else on the first floor interior layout which you'd like to describe to the board's benefit?
No.
And if you would, please go to the interior layout in the basement, also part of A-3. For the board, exactly what this particular...
It's a, it's gonna be a full height basement, fully sprinkled, primarily gonna be for storage. There will be utility space, sprinkler room, utility room, electric room, all in the basement. But primarily, it's just gonna be storage, additional storage for wine and spirits. It has a rear door out the back to the roadway going up to the parking lot, and it has an overhead door for deliveries. And it will have a small lift to bring up any, any wine and spirits up to the first floor.
The entire first floor is gonna be staged inventory, sir?
Yeah.
Can you describe for the board exactly how that loading and unloading will work, just in terms of deliveries?
Overhead door, they can bring in hand trucks for deliveries, bring it in, and then it's staged in the basement. And then when they need the extra stock upstairs on the first floor, they can use the freight lift to bring up that stock upstairs.
Great, thank you, Mr. Sarr. Can you go to your next plan sheet, please? Can you please describe what's in front of the board now?
It's the 2D elevations, unrendered, really the similar thing. Like I said, we're proposing a brick facade on the west elevation and the north elevations with a green mansard roof, hunter green, which is similar to the awnings they have now currently at their store. Black cornice, trim that will be brick also in a decorative design and a black brick base around both sides. It will have the decorative wall sconces, de-goose neck wall sconces in black, and cornice at the top. The signage will be only on the west elevation. It complies with all the signage ordinances and sizes. It is proposed at 21.19 square feet right now.
Will there be an additional sign, sir?
No, there will not.
I'm sorry, that's the area of the sign, 21?
Yes.
That's not the height of the sign, right?
No, 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 no.
Just to clarify?
Yes, that's the area of the sign.
And the roof, sir, can you describe the roof composition and what type of roof it is and what will be on it?
It'll be a flat roof, rolled roof. On top, there'll be the HVAC air conditioning units, which will be screened behind the high parapet, and any kind of condensers from the cooling units, the walk-in coolers.
What was the vision you were trying to accomplish in designing the exterior of this project?
We were trying to keep with the overall, or the feel of Oradell and downtown central business district. A lot of use of brick and traditional colors. So, and just keeping with what you find all along Kendrick Mac and Oradell.
Thank you, sir. Just following up on Mr. Wright's question before, if you could go into some detail, you described colors before of the sign. Please describe to the board's benefit some specific details about the composition of the sign, color, width, coloring, sizing.
The sizing we're proposing on here, the letters are one foot high. Overall length of the sign is proposed at 17 feet 3 inches. The wine glass is one foot higher than the letters themselves to give an overall area of the 21.19 square feet, which is less than the 24 square feet that we're allowed. The colors on the rendering, like I said, we're going with a gold, which differs from their original signage, just so it reads better on the cinnamon red color brick. The wine glass will be a blue color, and the wine inside will be a burgundy, which is all the colors they have now, and the ampersand is green. There'll be individual letters lit, internally lit, individual letters.
It won't be a box, that won't be a box backlit sign?
No, it will not be a box backlit sign.
Your testimony, Mr. Sarr, that proposed design, sizing, illumination of the sign for the project conforms with the awning and sign section of Oradell zoning ordinance?
Yes, it will comply.
Anything else you wanna add to your testimony, Mr. Sarr?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Sarr. Chairman, welcome, Mr. Sarr, any questions the board might have?
Mr. Chairman, as we usually do, we'll start with the professionals. Dave?
Sure, thank you. As far as the...
Dave, just, just one comment. This is a site plan approval?
Yeah.
Have we seen the site plan?
That's coming next.
Yeah.
And general test play next.
We have, we have multiple...
The package in the front. Assistant general overview will go through the entire site.
Just one other question about signage. Does that get approved tonight, or does that have to come back?
It complies. The only thing is the logo, which needs to be approved by the board.
That will come back.
It'll come back.
It'll come back, all right. Thank you.
Dave?
Sure. So I just have a couple of questions for you. So as far as the building itself, it'll, it's designed to meet ADA requirements as far as access?
Yes.
The lighting levels, the lighting around the site is all provided by the goose neck lighting on the building?
There are additional site lighting that the site engineer will discuss.
Okay. The lighting on the building, do you know, was that incorporated into the overall foot candles for the building? That's probably for the engineer, I guess.
That's, yeah, that would be...
And then, as far as the basement storage, I guess that's a, that's a requirement that's needed for the, for the property?
Yeah, that's something that they, they need.
Okay.
And there'll be additional, like I said, utility rooms and sprinkler rooms down there, so it's not 100% storage.
Okay. Yeah, and then as far as any additional signage, is there any other site signage that would be, that's being proposed, or just what's on the building?
What's on the building.
Fair enough. And then if I heard correct, the utilities are all mounted on the roof of the building?
Yeah, the air conditioning units, the condensers for the walk-in cooler will be on the roof.
And those are all, be screened?
Yes, they should be behind all the parapet walls.
Okay, so what we see in, what's on the screen right now is what we would see when it's completed? So they shouldn't exceed the height of what's there today?
They shouldn't, no.
Okay. I have no other questions of the architect.
Thank you, Dave. Steve?
Yes, thanks, Steve. As far as the units on the roof, are they proposed to be closer to the roadway, Kendrick Mac Road?
They'd probably be proposed to be behind the highest parapet, which is this front part here, okay? It gives the highest screening.
So they won't be in the rear of the building closer to the residential properties?
We can keep them closer to the front. It hasn't been fully designed, but we could take that recommendation, and I'll make sure the engineers will put them towards the front, Kendrick Mac Road.
Okay, thank you. As far as the signage, it's gonna be internally lit. Is that gonna be backlit? Is that what you're referring to, or?
No, each letter will be lit internally, mounted.
And so, so the letters are transparent, or?
You'll be able to see the light through them.
Okay, all right. Will they be LED lights of some sort, or?
That we don't know.
They'll comply with...
Yeah, we'll comply with...
Okay. And is there some reason why you don't want signage on the entrance of the building, on the side? I know it would be a...
It'd be a variance. I think at, at this time, the applicant wanted to get the project in and moving and getting it approved, and then come back at a later date if he wants that additional signage.
Understood. Okay, I, we did reach out to the Oradell volunteer... Okay, I, we did reach out to the Oradell Volunteer Party Department and Police Department and haven't received any information, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Caroline?
Thank you. So the brick, is it real brick, or is it like a?
It's a thin, thin brick veneer. It's real brick, but it's a thin veneer.
It's a veneer?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I have several questions and things we touched on, but I have a feeling that they may, well, I have a feeling they may be actually for other witnesses. The wine tasting area, is there going to be testimony with respect to the operation, how often those would occur, things like that?
There will be on that specifically in response to your report.
Okay.
It'll be addressed by both the operator and the engineer.
Okay, thank you. You touched briefly on deliveries with respect to the overhead door and the hand truck. Is there going to be additional testimony on time?
Yes.
How it's going to happen?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
The operator's here, both of the owners are here this evening, and they'll testify the currently operating. It's in the story. We need some information.
You got the dumpster. I think that's it for me for this witness right now, but thank you.
Mike?
No questions.
Okay, so members of the board, any questions specific for the architect, because there will be other professionals testifying for this application, so.
No questions. Okay.
I have some questions.
Okay, Greg?
Just want to clarify for the record. I know I've read most of this, but the maximum height of the building, the, how tall is the maximum height?
The west elevation, which is Kinder Comack Road, is 23 feet 2 inches.
Okay, and do you know what's permitted for the zone?
35.
Okay. And in terms of the building size, its coverage?
We comply with all-
It's-
Complies.
How much? I mean, is it within a few feet of complying, or is it 80%?
No.
Size it could be, or?
Yeah, I know the site engineer can testify that.
Okay, that's fine.
Regarding building coverage and lot coverage.
And-
To make that reputation on behalf of the client, they're both well within the requirements of the proposed zone.
Okay, I just wanted to know approximately in proportion, so, you know, is this building half the size it could be, or is it almost the size?
Significantly less than what it could be.
Okay, so that's about what I was looking for.
And then I'm just thinking of myself with that testimony.
Okay, and then far, is that a site engineer, or is that something you can answer far question, ratio?
Okay, if you can do that, it's honorable.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
And any other questions? Tom?
Yeah, just so I get a handle on it, if I'm looking at it on Kinder Comack Road in general, I'm just going to kind of see a brick building with a couple of awnings there. Are they windows there, or?
Yes, there is window, awning windows that are-
Six feet higher, something?
Yeah, they're higher up, so they can have display or shelving underneath or customer counter. The awnings are over all the windows.
So that's just to bring in light, basically, and the entrances on the side, and that, and the asphalt, or the parking will go around the back of the building to kind of the loading area? Is that correct, or?
Primarily the parking is on the side.
Parking, but in the back, in the rear?
On the back, there is an access, I don't want to say road, but an access pavement area down to the loading, the loading area.
So that's where we're hearing the future about the truck deliveries, et cetera?
Yes, yes.
And I'm assuming that's a backup and pull-out kind of a thing that we'll hear that?
The engineer will testify-
We'll talk about that, okay.
Operator will testify, Mr. Keller.
And then on the other side of the building, I guess on the south side, that is fairly close to the other retail establishments there, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And the reason for the kind of jog in the building is just aesthetically, you know, in terms of, you know what I mean, like the front part, rather than a, yeah?
Just to break up the facade, and so it's not one, all on one plane.
And just curiosity, you guys are, the owners currently just a couple of, right up 50, 100 yards from this building, right?
Correct.
So why, and if you can comment on, just to try to get an idea of the current size of that building, which we all know compared to this, so, you know, just the same size, bigger, smaller?
I believe this is larger to accommodate their operations and space, and it has, this will have a full storage basement.
Okay.
The applicant is here, and we'll can speak to that directly. He's noted that for his testimony.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Hines, any questions for the architect? Okay.
Steve, if I just make a comment, I thought I read that the area was going to be staked out to show where the new structure was going to be, and I went there Saturday morning, I didn't see any stakes. So Steve, isn't that something that we ask, or maybe?
I remember that request, Chairman. Is there something I need to-
They do, it's in the instructions about asking, because you're going to go visit the site.
Yeah, I did.
You know, that it should be staked out.
Who asked them to do that, Steve? Is that in a, is that in some document?
Yes, it's in the application instructions.
So I think you got to get that staked out, so at least people can see where, and the board can see where that building is going to sit on that lot, because it's quite different from what exists today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The engineers, the planners, the local engineers, speak directly to that certain issue. The engineer specifically, you need to-
Okay, if we don't have any other questions, we'll move on to your next witness.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You want to open it to public for the professional?
I was going to, I'll ask that question. Logistically, we typically don't open to the public until the end of all the testimony. Is it?
If that's your practice, I have no, that's, that's fine.
Because this is different than a zoning board hearing, so I think we can open it to the public after they've heard-
To all the professionals?
Yes, I think that's the better way to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next witness I have is the applicant's engineer, Kirsten Osterkorn.
To assist in answering Chairman's question specifically regarding the location of the proposed building-
Mr. Chairman, if you could do something?
I will do that.
Okay.
One second. I do have an amended part of the site plan that I'm going to circulate among the board members. So if you allow me to do that, I can, that might help elucidate some of the answers, and we can have Ms. Osterkorn sworn in.
Thanks, babe. Yeah.
Chairman, members of the board, I have with me here tonight Kirsten Osterkorn, Osterkorn Anomlin. She's an engineer, and I present her before you hear by the board's counsel.
Thank you, Kirsten. You swear the testimony you're going to give this evening is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
And you'll be testifying in your capacity as an engineer?
Yes.
Could you spell your last name? And you've been an engineer since?
2011.
And have you testified as an expert before this board or other boards?
I have been in front of the zoning board in Oradell. I've also been in other boards in Bergen County, Franklin Lakes, Wykoff, Mawa, Upper Saddle River, been in Morris County, Union Essex. I really don't think I've been in front of the planning board, but I've been in front of the zoning board a bunch of times.
Is the board of any objection to hearing the testimony of this engineer in her capacity as an expert?
No objections.
Please proceed.
Thank you, counsel. Before proceeding, just a procedural matter, can we mark this exhibit that was just distributed as A-4?
Yes, and how would you describe it on your exhibit list?
It's a advisory engineering plan with north buffer provided by Kirsten Osterkorn PE.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Evening, Ms. Osterkorn.
Hi.
You are the engineer for this particular project.
Yes.
And just before we get into the rest of your testimony, I wanted to just clarify one particular issue for the board's benefit, so they have a point of reference. At a turn, we circulated your amendment to your site plan to show the buffer and if it currently exists.
Yes.
Colorized aerial photographs, is that correct?
Yes.
And the board chairman had a question as to the location of where this particular proposed building would sit on the property. And just ask, if you would, just to answer that directly, let me get your testimony. Can you describe where that property is located, vis a vis the rest of the buildings in the area, and just place it on the property for the board's benefit?
Kirsten, excuse me, could you just tip that a little so she can have a better view of that, please?
I didn't get a hand, no. They took them all? You don't get any of them?
Here, you go. You can have mine.
No, no.
No, I've got them.
No, Steve's hogging them.
Thank you. Please, the councilman gave me his, so.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I understand that the request for actually staking out the building, which it, and I apologize, it was not conveyed for us to do that before, because we could have put out a couple stakes to understand where the building was. When we speak to the southwest corner, we are hitting the setback property line requirement of 15 feet, so behind the sidewalk, if you were out there from the sidewalk, it would be 15 feet. And, I mean, we end up being more of a square on the property, and in trying to understand, I can speak more to it when I look at my plans of kind of seeing where the existing building is versus where the proposed is, but I understand wanting to walk out there and try to actually see where the building is. We are ultimately holding that 10-foot side yard setback on the south side, and on that west side, that 15-foot setback, which is what holds that line. So if you were along that southern building that's there and being able to attempt to understand, but I understand why the stakes would be wanted and understood, I did not know, and this wasn't, I mean, it just wasn't a thing that we did to know.
Okay, Ms. Osterkorn, would it be safe to say that the proposed building is in the southwest corner of the property?
Yes.
Okay, and it's, you said 10 feet from the property line? Is the gin acupuncture building directly to the south of that building?
I don't want to say, but I don't want to mess up. Yes, 10 feet.
Okay, what is the frontage of that building along Kinder Comack Road?
I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers. I think it's a 70, 70-foot wide building.
Okay, and then how, how?
Like a 70 by 70. It's like a square.
70 by 70 building?
Yeah.
And how far from the east boundary is the building's east boundary line? Correct, east boundary line?
The east, so we have, we have the 10-foot buffer requirement. Let me just go, I should just go to the plans, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Osterkorn. So 26 feet off the east boundary line, 70 feet, that's 10 feet off the south boundary line, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Does your mind that adequately described the location of the 70 by 70 building?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Osterkorn. If you would, please, if you want to sit, you may, if you would, describe standing, that's perfectly fine. If you would, please give us, the board, the benefit of the overview of your site plan.
Yes.
And we can move to that exhibit once you're ready.
Okay, the, I'm going to go to my site plan. The one thing that was different from this exhibit that I wanted to just talk about before I go to the site plan is we changed, when I go to the site plan, you'll see we changed the layout of the driveway and parking in order to maintain a six-foot landscaping buffer on the north side and be able to plant an evergreen buffer and have a fencing that complies with the buffer requirements. So that was the main change in showing this plan, is being able to show that, so when I do show my plans, that will be one of the differences that you end up seeing. These plans-
Thank you, Ms. Osterkorn, for making that clarification.
You're welcome.
We can return to that later.
I will.
Thank you.
So these site plans are the ones that were submitted. I don't have to mark them, right? No.
Counsel, if we mark that as A-55, thank you.
On the left side of the page is the existing conditions. There is that, this is 90 Kinder Comack Road, block 116, lot 30, for the purposes of when I talk about it, north is to the bottom of the page and south is to the top of the page. The survey that was done, there's a one-story commercial building that's on the north corner that's basically a couple inches from the property line to lot 5, that's to the north, and there is an asphalt parking lot. There is just overgrownness on the south side and a fence that runs along the east, which then drops off in grade with respect to your topography on the property. There are a bunch of trees that are beyond on that east side of the property line, and then we have the residential lots that are to the east, lots 11, 12, 13, and 14. What we are proposing, which is the right side of my page is the layout and dimensioning plan. Now, as I explained, this layout of the parking got turned slightly, got a little tweaked. So instead of having coming in the 32-foot to 31 to 26, which originally, the way it was designed, was trying to maintain the existing commercial and parking lot areas, so we were holding that line that existed on that northern property line. But from some comments from the engineer, from neighbors, and from the professionals, from the planner, we made it more parallel and turned it in order to have a buffer along this northern property line. So we are maintaining now a 24-foot aisle, which would be required for the backup spaces from the parking areas. I do apologize for my back being to everybody, I'm sorry, but you can see up there, just still feels weird. So as you come into the property, you have your entrance in the north, the north corner of the building. We have two parking spaces that are parallel, parking spaces adjacent to the building, and our parking and handicap that are along the north side. We have the area for a dumpster enclosure in this northwest corner, and the ability for the delivery trucks to be able to deliver down, just turn and maneuver slightly so they can unload and get to the rear of the building in the south corner.
What's the size of the trash enclosure?
It's a 12 and 1/2 by 18.
Where's the gate on that?
The gates to the south, this side. I didn't, I mean, the area we made was very big for it. I mean, ideally where they actually put the garbage and trucks, I mean, I can provide a detail that's needed, which I believe is one of the engineer's requests, which I can do. This is an extra large area that is needed for it, but it just gives the trucks the ability to turn around and get their, the garbage, and also for the delivery trucks to just, the box trucks to do a quick K-turn and be able to get down to do the deliveries down to the back. There were, and I'm going through, I'm sorry, just briefly, I did read through all of the engineering letter. I had spoken with Mr. Atkinson beforehand, and a lot of his comments, everything I can address. There have been, there were minor comments about details needed, a stop bar, showing the depressed curb. There were just minor stuff that I had talked to him that I can address all of his comments that, any questions that were asked. We had also spoken and had some comments from the county about what they wanted to see in this area that we are able to address in revisions. Going to sheet four. The left side of the page- The left side of the page is the grading and utility, and the right side is soil erosion. They mainly look duplicate just because the soil erosion side shows what's needed for the Soil Conservation District, which we did submit to for their permitting and application. But the main part would be the left side of the page. We're showing the utilities coming from Kinder Comack Road. And the main part of this is the drainage, that the roof, the roof leader system of the building would be collected into an underground detention system. Some of the comments from the engineer, which I had spoken about with him before too, is with soil testing and making sure that the underground subsurface can handle this. It ends up being an expense and a time restraint that happens with having to do that. I have done work in this area and the soils are in good condition that can handle this type of infiltration into it. But we understand that it is a requirement that we would provide and end up working with the engineer if there's any additional details or storage that would be required by him for this. But part of the system of how we have it is when you come off of Kinder Comack Road, the water, we're collecting the roof water, the rest of the water ends up draining to an inlet in the northeast corner, which would be collected and brought into the system. From that, we also have a trench grate, a trench grate that comes off of the building. That same water would be into this system. The rest of the water that ends up, and this is now talking just about rainwater, when the rain falls and it hits the ramp going down, would go into a seepage pit that's in the south corner. One of the questions and concerns that I had talked to the engineer about was while the groundwater can handle it, it is good soil, but if you have that crazy heavy downfall and it just is a lot of water. I talked with the applicant and he would end up treating this area similar to the rest of the building of having a sump pump and being able to pump it out with the rest of, if he has groundwater that hits the rest of the basement in his building, and having an extra pump for the seepage pit in order to make sure that we don't just have a puddle of water for him. And at this point, I mean, in this corner, it's not really impacting the neighbors. It's more impacting him of making sure that he can pump and get that water out. There is this inlet in the north corner, which I had looked at previously to see if we can end up connecting into it, which I still have further investigation to do. But as my, I had the conversation with the engineer of the technicalities of the drainage working. We're not a major development, we're designing it for the storms that can accommodate this type of development, and it's going to work. Whether it's all of just this system, we have a pump that comes from here to here and out to here. The, at the end of the day, the owner doesn't want his property getting flooded and he obviously doesn't want neighbors getting flooded. That whatever it takes to make sure the water ends up coming out and where it needs to go, we're, those, those details will get worked out.
Just to interrupt you for a second.
Sure.
Ms. Osterkorn, I think it was Mr. Barian had a question before off of the book table on lot coverage?
Oh, yes.
Impervious building coverage. If I would speak directly to your testimony and take the opportunity to answer your question.
Sure.
Tie that into how the system works, giving you that the coverage is what it is.
Correct. So the maximum permitted building coverage is 40%. The proposed building is at 31.1%. And the maximum lot coverage is at 85%, and what we're proposing is 70%. So ultimately, we are complying with the zoning ordinance for coverages. We're still trying to handle the increase in coverage, which I know was a comment in Mr. Atkinson's letter because there was a discrepancy and I have more chambers on my plan than in my calculations, but I know that the math worked and we have enough storage for everything. But we are showing enough storage for our increase in area. We do not meet the major development requirements, we're not disturbing an acre, we're not increasing impervious by a quarter acre. So we are just trying to handle the water that is on site above and beyond what's there today. Because currently, if I go back to the original sheet, which is the building and the parking lot, none of that is being collected and it's just draining wherever it goes. So we're capturing that plus some with our building and our parking lot. So any impervious on site right now, we are collecting into a drainage system, which is more than we need to do, but at the same time, we still meet all the requirements in the zoning ordinance.
Please continue.
Some of the other questions that had come up had to do with the grading with respect to the walls that we're proposing. So on the north side of the site, which is the parking lot side, can't point to that screen, but the parking lot side, we are in a, we're in a fill area, so we're higher than the neighbors behind us. So we have a retaining wall, it's a five, a little over a five-foot retaining wall. And then we have, we had proposed a four-foot just, not a privacy fence, the aluminum fence for safety. We were proposing along the entire property line, the privacy fence, looking to meet the buffer requirements of landscaping or privacy. But I do understand the concerns of just you have a taller wall and not having that extreme privacy from just a privacy fence. On this north side, where we were able, from the rendering that we had sent in, that we were able to move everything and able to put in a six-foot buffer of arbor, I put in a symbol, but ultimately, they would be five-foot wide. They could be the tall arbivites that can handle this. You can still have that privacy fence. At some point, the question comes to, along this east side, is we can have a privacy fence at the property line? And, actually, I'm gonna go to the next page really quick while I'm talking about this.
Want to say, same plan?
The same plan, but the landscaping will make more sense. Sorry, this is page five. There, there were comments about how some of the requirements are having staggered trees to make them, that buffer. What we were ultimately proposing was trying to keep as many existing trees as we could. We took out the trees that were in our area of work, but in that 15-foot disturbance, we were trying to keep existing trees and fill them in with larger pines. It still is possible, I mean, you can end up taking out all the trees and putting in a complete staggered row of tall arbivites and have a complete wall buffer of trees that way and have the privacy fence in between. The other option is we keep the existing trees, which are more deciduous in nature, they have the foliage and all the leaves fall and it's beautiful. And we fill them in with larger evergreens. And then we can put the privacy fencing on the high side, in this case, which is the west side of the trees. But when we were looking to do that, it made it seem like it was too tall of a view because you'd have a five-foot fence and then you put a pri, like, we were doing the ornamental fence on top, so you could kind of still, you'd have your landscaping, have a five-foot wall, and then have a four-foot fence. We could put a privacy fence on top of the wall. There is a gap in the wall where it changes from what I consider a fill wall, where this property is higher than this property versus a cut wall, which when we go down in grade, our property is lower than the neighbor's property. So the lots 14 and 13, in this case, are higher than us. So if you do the privacy fencing for, for the lots 13 and 14, they get strict privacy, privacy and have trees behind them. Then we have a little ornamental fencing to protect the wall, and that's it. It's lots 11 and 12 where the question comes of like, is it better to have the privacy fencing right against their property? Have some landscaping and then you have a wall? Or do we want to put that privacy fencing on top of the wall? And ultimately, the client's up to whatever makes sense to still meet the requirements and whatever the board ultimately would want to do. Our goal here was to keep existing trees, but we could also take out trees and put in that staggered row that's required and put in very tall and make it like a wall of arbivites, different arbivites. You can do a mixture of different ones that still go tall. And you have an entire, I mean, my, my neighbors have them, they're like 15 feet tall now, that you can do that whole row.
Just, just to give the board some context.
Sorry.
You offered two options there.
Yes.
The proposed plans indicate filling, maintaining several trees.
Yes.
The other option is to do, take out all the trees. You're in response to both Ms. Ryder's and Mr. Atkinson's comment letters.
Yes.
And their, their request that you revisit that.
Yes.
Come up with the second option of coming across the straight green screen.
Yeah, we can do the staggered, staggered, conforming with it, and then still have fencing to, to what's required for the wall and the wall heights that are needed for it. So it's a mixture of both that meets the building code for the wall and meets a complete staggered buffer requirement for that 15 feet that we stayed out of.
Could you just review the fencing?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I see a six-inch, a six-foot vinyl privacy fence on the east side of the, of the plantings.
Yes.
And then I see a wall on the west side of the plantings. And then I see another fence, a four-foot decorative aluminum fence.
That's just.
Outside of the wall.
Yes, that's just for the, so since the wall is over 30 inches tall and there's a drive aisle by it, driver walkway for building code, if it's over 30 inches, you need a barrier, which would be a fence.
Okay.
So that fence is, I did it as decorative aluminum, not to have like a double privacy, but it was just more to meet the building code requirements because of the height of the wall.
So for the, for the residential, they'll be looking at a fence, is that the?
The residential's.
Six-foot vinyl privacy fence?
For 11 and, for, well, for all of them, 11, lots 11, 12, and 13 would be looking at a six-foot vinyl privacy fence. And behind them would be trees. For lots 11 and 12, through the trees, if we keep some of the existing trees, which are more deciduous trees, so when the leaves fall and stuff, which is right now, they would end up seeing the wall and that decorative fence behind it. Lots 13 and 14, they're higher, so they wouldn't, they, I mean, they would see that, but at the end of the day, like, they're, they're at the same level of them. So it wouldn't be as if they're looking up at anything. Versus 11 and 12, you have, you would have some evergreens and then some deciduous, that then they would see the wall. Versus if the owner takes out the trees and puts in all evergreens that are there all year round, the idea is that they wouldn't see the wall at all because they'd be planting the trees that start at six feet, six, seven feet high, that just block the wall. So they wouldn't see the wall. And then we would put the fence, I mean, we can keep this vinyl fence too, or we just put the fence on the wall side where we need it for building code and they, they just have a tree row.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Osterkorn. We can submit you to questions from the board, and perhaps you can move on with the rest of your testimony.
Yes, start. With respect to, I think I hit everything on grading and drainage. If I didn't, Dave will ask me certain questions and I'll be fine. With respect to lighting, there were the, the comments of the certain foot candles that were over what needed to be.
The conforming foot candles have to be .2 for the joint neighbors.
They have to be .2, so we.
And we are deviating from that, and it's a variance.
Slightly, but we would.
We speak to that directly and advise the board if or will not, that will be a variance in conformity.
We would fix this not to be a variance.
It'll be conforming.
We would be conforming. We're talking about moving, we have these light fixtures here. There's a light pole here that we would be changing enough to meet the .2 at the property lines. I believe there was a 1.8 somewhere right here, that, at that northwest corner. So I would have, that light fixture at the corner would be brought in slightly. We would redo this lighting to meet those requirements and not need a variance. We're talking about moving light fixtures inches to just bring it to conformance.
Excellent, thank you. Did you speak to the site improvements along the frontage? And any requirements that the borough may have relevant to egress and egress, driveway abrins, sidewalks, bollards, placing of utility poles, things of that nature?
I'll do whatever they want.
Why don't you just address that entry and exit as a whole and identify whether or not that is something the applicant will comply with?
Yes.
Where there's some exception to it, so we can move to the next area.
Sorry. Anything specific with the, ooh, let me go back. Yeah. Any specifics with the, the entry? There was some, some comments with lighting we're gonna be able to comply with. We can add if there's bollards needed. I believe the, when this lighting was done, as you can see, the, the walkway path was slightly different in the, at the timing of when this was done that we can fix and comply with. There were other comments with respect to landscaping with tree removal and replacement. And when I was able to calculate out the trees we removed, we needed to replace 13 trees back. And what I calculated out can comply if we, these ornamental trees, if we make them shade trees, they can work. But then there were also questions about having to do street trees, which then would have to go into the sidewalks, which was also a question I had. And I've been down Kinder Comack and I know they have, they have street trees and how they, they're, they do their cutouts and stuff. So if that would want to be part of this, where we have them on the property, but also introduce them, but it would end up cutting out into the sidewalk area.
I think the applicant will conform with whatever the building department and the borough engineer recommends with, relevant to those off-site improvements in the sidewalk. And it'll be a function of any capital improvement agreement that an applicant, if successful, has to enter into with the borough. So we'll do, we'll comply with whatever the requirements are.
But when I did work out the numbers, which I can provide, and I talked to Mr. Atkinson about it, when I calculate out the removal, what I can, the only things would have to change is that these dogwoods would need to become the, the two and a half inch caliber.
So that would require revisions to the plans, is that what you're saying in order for that to work?
Yes, oh yeah, the law, the landscaping would be changing because I'd be adding that.
The whole thing is changing anyways.
Yes.
The revisions could be subject to or condition of any approval that be submitted.
Yes, that we would be meeting the requirement for tree removal versus tree replacement.
And any tree applications, shade tree conformity would be complied with as a condition of any approval as well? I think there was a question Mr. Atkins had relevant to a generator. I think you've had an opportunity to find about that. Identify for the board, one, if there will be one, and two, where will be located, how will it function?
They would want to put one in, especially for introducing more sump pumps. And the thought would go, it would go on the south side of the building, which I believe can go in the setback.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Depkin, Mr. Depkin's looking at me.
That'll be properly screened?
Yeah, we had landscaping along this side anyway, but I know it slopes down here, so we would end up putting it kind of in the central part of the building.
So that off the rear, the rear property line, that's approximately how, how far?
The eight feet, nope.
Rear prop, the eastbound property line.
Oh, the eastbound?
That's correct.
Oh, that's a lot farther. 50 feet?
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Osterkorn, is there anything else you want to mention in connection with your testimony relevant to the site plan itself? Would you prefer to submit any questions from the professional board?
I'm going through the letters again. But they could ask me any specific questions if they'd like.
Chairman, I submit this witness to the board, the board professional's question.
Thank you. Dave, we'll start with you.
Sure. Thank you, Kirsten, for your testimony. As far as, I guess we'll start with the drainage on the, on the property.
Yeah.
Can you just describe a little bit as far as what's there today? Can you just describe a little bit as far as what's there today and how, what the drainage patterns are and what impact you guys will have as far as the proposed improvements?
Sure. Everything currently drains, which way am I going, sorry, from the top of the page, so the south. So it drains from the south to the north, the southwest to the northeast. So the northeast corner is the lowest part of the site. The southwest corner on Kinderkamak is the highest point. Kinderkamak Road is draining from south to north. So currently under existing conditions, anything that, white topography was off on this and I do apologize, but anything that lands on the property is now draining in a west-to-east pattern to that northeast corner of the property. Everything in Kinderkamak Road stays in Kinderkamak Road. There's an inlet in our north corner, but anything that lands on the property with the building, the parking lot, and anything in the, the grass area, in the woods, just, they, they drain to that northeast area.
Is there any drainage on the, on the existing property today?
No. So, under proposed conditions, while we are increasing our impervious, we're still staying within what's permitted under the zoning ordinance, we are collecting all of our impervious. So in this northeast corner, we are coming up higher, but anything that now comes into that northeast corner, we're collecting with an inlet or a trench grate and we're bringing it into a drainage system that will percolate into the ground and go and become groundwater down below. This small portion to the east side of the building that goes to the seepage pit will do the same. And under the heavy storms, having the sump pump will help alleviate that issue. Along the east property line that currently still just, in that wooded area drains to the east will remain the same. We're just replanting that area. We're actually supplementing what exists today with additional plantings for that area. And along the west side of the building, anything that currently was just sheet flowing across the property, we're pitching away from the building. So some of the, the small portion of the front will come out to Kinderkamak Road and anything across will enter into the parking lot and come into our drainage system.
So essentially, all the, the proposed improvements, all the impervious coverage, you're capturing the runoff from?
Yes.
And then the system will be designed to handle that volume of water?
Yes.
Okay. So is that an improvement?
Yes.
To the site, and what are there today? Okay. So in theory, there should be less water going to the residents.
Yes.
Behind that. Okay. All right. Now, as far as the, the lighting calculations, I think you said you're going to modify those?
Yes.
Or the layout of them to comply?
Yeah. Like this pole in this north corner, where I'm going to talk to the lighting consultant will bring in a little bit to get those numbers under. And the ones that are on the building will bring closer in to just get those foot candles off the property lines and comply.
And the lighting that's proposed, are those LED fixtures?
Yes.
And then if need be, is there ability to adjust the lighting level in the future?
Yes.
And then, I know we had a comment in there about doing a six-month lighting study after the fact, in the event that it's required.
Yes.
We'll submit that.
Okay. Thank you on that. So as far as the lights, they all comply with the borough's code as far as height?
Yeah.
Okay. And then as far as the parking, so can you just talk a little bit about where the ADA space is located and if that complies with the regulations?
So we had designed this originally with the ADA parking here, and that didn't work very well with the slope. So we changed it and we put the ADA across, which we know does happen in parking areas and it's not the end of the world. And so we have the cross slope from the south to the north. It all meets the ADA coming across it. If it's thought a crosswalk is better, we can add that across so people know that people may be crossing straight from here, we can put it across. But this, it meets the requirements for the slope. When we had it here, because we were trying to get down to the back, I wanted to start dropping the grade more, which didn't work for ADA. So when we put it in this corner, we were able to come across the driveway. But ultimately, I mean, the traffic engineer, I mean, the turnover and stuff's not crazy.
All right. So in your opinion, the location you have is the, the most suitable location?
Yes.
And meets the requirements. And I think your testimony is if we put it in the parallel location, you don't, the slopes there would not comply?
It would not comply.
All right, that's fine. Now, I guess along, I know in your testimony you indicated there's a fence just above the retaining wall.
This one?
Yes.
Yeah.
I know in our comments, I think we had indicated about putting a guide rail.
Okay.
Just because if there's vehicles obviously driving in the parking lot, we would like to prevent them from going over that wall.
Oh, it's a different angle, sorry. But still, so ones coming in is having here a guide rail?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Which that, then we just swap that out for the fence, because then that would meet the barrier requirement.
That's fine. And then just for the board's adification, depending on what the thought process is, as it relates to that fencing along the rear property line, fencing on top of walls per the borough code is a maximum of four foot high, just so you guys are aware and so you're aware as well, as we go through this process. As far as that buffering, thank you for making those adjustments to the parking lot. I think that makes it a little bit better and provides that buffer between the property and the apartment complex to the, to the north there. Can you just talk a little bit about access to the front door and what's being proposed there and how that'll be worked through? I know you, you mentioned something about bollards or different things.
Oh, I can do, and I apologize for this green. That was not supposed to be green. That's grass underneath. We had, so, I could go back to the other plan, sorry, because I'm using that one. So we had for coming off the sidewalk to be able to walk down a sidewalk and then still walk around a four-foot path in order to get to the door, which is on the north side of the building. From our conversations too, it's that if there is the concern, I mean, extending and ultimately, I mean, if, maintaining this 24-foot aisle here, you could either make this all sidewalk, or we could add landscaping, or you, I mean, if we have it pavement, and that's in that, just to the north of the walkway. Now, he doesn't need to point. In this area here, which I think was the concern of like, if you wanted to put bollards in here.
Well, I think it's just, the concern I have is where you have the doors, is that, is that concrete, is that flush with the pavement? And if a motorist happens to be driving, could they potentially go in through the front, could, could a motor vehicle go through the front door and what would prevent that?
Right.
I want it to cross the front to the entrance.
If we do bollards across or we end up making it curbing across, I mean, I think either one's fine.
Is there going to be a curb? I mean, the entrance way is going to have a curb? Let's say a sidewalk would be elevated six inches?
In this, because we were doing the ADA across, it was all flush, but it could still just be where, because I'm making this the, the 24-foot aisle in, is if we have a curb across, just that little entrance is just the depressed in order for the ADA to cross over and you have it curbed. I mean, or it's just flush and you bollard, I mean, but I can, the curbs, I think it'll look nicer coming in. If you come in, now that I straightened it out in this one, and if you just, instead of having this be pavement, it could just be walkway too. So you just come in straight with curbing. And then if the crosswalk comes across, there's just the depressed area for the ADA to get through. But coming in here, it's directed with curb. It's not concrete and pavement, I think is better.
That's fine. My biggest concern is just the motor vehicle, so there just needs to be some sort of definition, whether it's, you know, the full height curb or bollard. If it ends up being flush, then there should be some bollards in that location to protect the, the building and people that are on the walkway as well. I know I had, kind of jumped and missed over the one, but to that back loading area, I think you had said, and I know we had talked about, my concern was, you have the slope going down to that whole area, there's no way for that water to escape. So you have a secondary, or you're proposing a secondary means, which would be through a pump.
There's, there's gonna, there's gonna be a pump and what I'm going, I'm going to look into, I mean, between any pumps that they have in the basement is either, I mean, we have the system here, but there is the inlet right here of being able to make that overflow connection if it needed to be.
Okay. But you would have some sort of means to get the water out in the event that we had a heavy rain event?
Yes.
Because, kind of creating an undue hardship to the building as far as a potential flooding?
Yes, we don't want to do that.
So you guys are looking to take care of that and alleviate that problem. So as far as parking, so I guess you have eight total parking spaces on, that are proposed on site. Is there any EV being proposed?
I don't know.
We don't have any proposed right now, but I understood that was a comment that you had in your report, that you cited the statute. We can, so we can certainly get it available depending on what the requirements are. I'm sure some of them are open to be a 50-year use here or more, so.
So you'll comply with the requirements for EVs?
I'm sorry?
You'll, okay.
Dave, why would there be a requirement for EV if your retail store that people are in and out and?
It, it's just a state requirement, so.
Say no more.
That is an excellent point. It's because the trip generation is, the planner will testify to a three to five minutes. So the concern with that, it can be EV-ready, is that people are going to park their car there and create a problem.
Understood. That's fine.
We understand that, we understand the statutory requirement. Typically, it applies to major subdivisions. They may have a mandatory requirement, a percent, it's a function of their approval. But here, if we have to put something in there and make it ready, we will make it ready for that.
Yeah, EV-ready would satisfy that requirement, so.
For the number of parking spaces?
Thank you, Council. That was a good point.
Yeah. Now, as far as the site, I guess, will the traffic engineer get into like site circulation and?
Yes.
All that stuff?
And the owner.
Yes.
As far as access to that back loading area with the box truck and?
Yes.
They'll get into all that, as well as the garbage truck?
And the garbage circulation, recycling.
Okay.
One thing, I may interject for a moment. I know, I don't want to take the mic from you, but I'm not sure Ms. Astor-Corn identified her bulk table for the board's benefit, maybe a full recitation of what the bulk table says and the proposed.
Yeah, she wants to go ahead and jump on that, that's fine.
Jump on that while Mr. Atkinson has his last thought. Just educate the board as to what the variances are that the planner will testify to and what compliance of the bulk table has shown so far.
Sure. So, minimum lot width permitted is 150 feet, existing is 140.1, which is not changing, so we have an existing nonconformity. The minimum front yard setback is 15 feet, existing is four feet, proposed is 15 feet conforming. Minimum side yard is 10 feet, existing is .4 feet, existing nonconformity, 10 feet is proposed, so it conforms. The other side yard, both combined, it's 25 feet, existing is greater than 40, proposed is 65, so we conform. Rear yard parking is supposed to be in the permitted, rear yard, the existing is in the front and side, proposed is in the side yard, so we have a variance for that. Building coverage I went over, required is 40%, existing is 4.4, we're at 31.1. Maximum lot coverage is 85%, existing is 28.1, and we are proposed at 70, all conforming. Floor area ratio permitted is 35%, existing is 4.4, proposed is 31.1, so we're conforming. And then we go to parking, required parking is 18, existing, we didn't have a calculation for it based on the use, proposed is eight, so we are not conforming, which is what the traffic engineer will be speaking to in terms of parking and, street parking and things.
I believe when you did your calculation, your site plan of the interior building coverage, your bulk table indicates you came out with the number 4,252 or 226. And Mr. Sauer had testified earlier today, his calculation, which he did on his architectural plans were somewhat, he testified that his number was off and he deferred to the interior building coverage, which was the number that you had on your bulk table.
Yes, we had required it 17 spaces for 4,252, which is the interior for 250 square feet.
Interior building coverage, that is the ordinance requirement?
It's 250 square feet.
Is that?
Yeah, sorry. Oh, I thought you were trying.
Is that the ordinance requirement?
Yes, interior.
All right, I'm sorry, Mr.?
So, I'm sorry, can we just, I'm, I don't want to cut off Dave. I'm really sorry. I just want to clarify then, is the testimony that the 17 that's on your plan?
Yeah, sorry, I was reading the chart.
The 17 that require parking spaces is what's accurate and that we should be computing that based on the total building square footage from the engineering plans, rather than, I know at least in my report, and I'm sounding like Dave did the same thing, that we use the larger number that was in the architect's plans, which resulted in 18 space requirement. But what I'm hearing is that we should be, that's number, is not the number to be using and that what is shown on the engineering plans and therefore in your bulk table is what's accurate. So while there still is a parking variance.
Yes, it should be, the interior is the 4,252, which is 17 spaces. We have the overall building area, but that's the outside area that's used for coverages and other numbers. But the interior number is the 4,252.
So while a variance is still required?
Yes.
Because you're providing eight spaces.
It's 17.
17 versus eight, as opposed to 18.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Atkinson.
No problem. All right, I have a couple more questions and then I will hand you over to the planner.
Thank you.
So as far as the site itself, so in our comment, in our review letter, we talked about the soil movement. So based on the numbers that we have here, the total, anticipated soil movement is roughly 1,500 cubic yards?
Yeah.
Does that sound correct? So just for the board's adification, as part of this application, you have to act on the soil movement aspect of it as well. Last two questions I have for now. As far as the site itself?
For now.
Well, in case I come up with something else, who knows. Are you required to get a treatment works approval for the site?
No.
Okay. And then what about for safe drinking water?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. Those are all the questions I have at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Steve?
Yes, in regards to the buffer area, you're, I think you're proposing to keep the existing trees, the mature trees?
Well, that's what we want to do.
Okay. So they're deciduous, they do drop, you know, leaves into the?
Leaves, yes.
And what the code states is the buffer area needs to be evergreens? Are you planning on putting evergreens underneath those trees or what?
The evergreens we're proposing that we have are larger ones that are filling in, but it's not meeting the, this staggered standard. I'm not, I wasn't proposing them underneath with the root systems and so, I wasn't filling in completely underneath them, because I don't think.
I mean, so the, so the purpose of the buffer area is to buffer it from the residential properties. So do you feel that those mature trees are doing that?
No. But I don't want to take out mature trees unless someone from the town wants me to. I think keeping trees from shade tree commissions and stuff is usually more of the intent. I understand the purposes of a buffer zone, which is why we were trying to propose a fence, but to answer that question, I, I don't think it does. But I also don't want to put on a plan a bunch of evergreens and say it's going to do it and then they're not, they, you have that root system of those trees, that they're not going to work together. So I don't think the existing trees meets the buffer, so the question is.
So you're looking for a variance from the buffer requirements?
Yes. And that, I mean, and that, that goes to the other testimony before. Unless it's more requested with neighbors and the board of meeting the buffer requirements, then they would take down the trees. And with our replacements, we could meet that. I was trying to.
And that's going to be presented with the revised plans?
Yeah.
What's it, just may, if I may clarify for a moment, Mr. Depkin, there is, the, the. Just if I may clarify for a moment, Mr. Dapkin, there is, the existing buffer along the eastern boundary of the property is in compliance with the Oradel buffer zone requirement, has six-foot double-sided stockade fence, has replacement of deciduous trees with the evergreen trees that's in the ordinance. And, but what the engineer was trying to accomplish was saving some of those trees. If it's the board's preference, if the applicant will comply, if the board requires that we just take those trees out and put in evergreen trees, they will do that. They'll do that in a zigzag pattern in full conformance with the buffer zone requirements as articulated by Ms. Rider in her report and Mr. Atkinson's in his. We're happy to do that.
Sure.
I think the engineer was just trying to be sensitive to the fact of the existence.
No, I understand, just as long as the board's aware of what is being proposed.
I just wanted to make you aware of that and the board aware that they're willing to amend that as appropriate as the board may see fit.
Good, thank you.
In order to be compliant. Thank you.
We don't have a proposed area for the fire department connection for the sprinkler system. That needs to be approved by the volunteer fire department. You haven't heard from them?
No, but whatever they want, I'm assuming it's in the front of the building?
Yes.
Whatever they want, we would do.
So we will contact them again to get that clarification?
We did get an email yesterday from Gabrielle at the building department forwarding an email from the fire official, it might have been the fire subcode official.
No, that's fire prevention.
Fire prevention. And he did indicate that his interest was the fire suppression system, which the architect did testify in response there to.
Okay.
So we haven't received any notes from the fire or police as you previously.
Okay. Well, we'll put that message out again. And the exterior lights, I think David mentioned that they'll be dimmable if it appears to be too bright. LED lights for some reason get very confusing in wattage and looms and whatever nicks or whatever.
But they're so much fun, we could, there's so much fun you can do with those lights now.
Okay, but they are.
But they are dimmable, yes.
And Dave mentioned about the sump pump in the back, so you're gonna try to sump, connect into the back of the catch basin on Kinnick-Mack Road?
That would be the goal. I know we have to apply to the county anyway, so that would be is connecting, because they're gonna have the sump pumps in the basement too, so we don't want them just going out to daylight in the front yard and coming back in.
I mean, it's been done in town before, so I mean, I.
I think that would be, I'm not going out to the street, there's that catch basin that's right there, which I think is very doable to do.
Okay. And I think you mentioned that the sidewalk program, it's a, it was a design that was approved, it's a separate ordinance in regards to, you know, brick pavers and things like that?
Yes.
And you'll bring that up into compliance?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Caroline?
Thank you. The retaining wall, can you remind us of what the height is of the retaining wall? I believe it varies.
It does. The tallest point in the northeast corner is 5.3 feet, which is where we're in the fill section, so for the lots to the east of us, that's where the wall, they can see it. And then in the southeast corner, it's six feet, but that's where we're in a cut section, so the neighbors don't see the wall.
Right, and can you explain that?
We're lower, like that part will be lower, so the neighbors at that part are higher than us. So they're technically six feet higher than where that entry would be. So they're just gonna see trees.
You're creating that ramp?
Yes. Well, there's already that, right in the area where we're creating the ramp, it already, I mean, the grades we're meeting are not technically far off in this area, the north area. It slopes off already at like a steep slope in the, where all the, there's a bunch of trees planted right here. So where we start the ramp, we're at the same grade, and where the ramp ends, that's where we end up cutting down. So halfway through the ramp is where it changes from what would be considered a fill wall, where we're higher into a cut wall where we become lower. So it's kind of a balance into this, if you imagine a slope that's coming down, we're coming into it. So part of it's in higher and then part of it goes lower. I know, I'm just moving my hand around.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
So we have, so that I'm clear, we have 5.3 feet in one corner and six feet in the opposite corner?
Yes.
And then what happens in between?
The wall height, so the wall height, it changes. I mean, the top of wall, so along this east property line, the top of wall changes maybe like a foot, and it's the bottom of wall that is changing based on meeting the existing ground. So here it's 5.3 feet, but as you get closer to the building, it's only four and a half feet. So the top of wall would step up because we're just meeting whatever's existing ground. And then as we come down this ramp, we hit a point where we meet grade, we meet whatever is existing, so there's a break in the wall. And then as we continue to, my hand motions are just, I'm sorry, we cut down into the ground, we are then changing, so top of wall is 96, bottom is 95, then top of wall, it's all meeting the existing. Top of wall becomes 97, then it becomes 98. Bottom of wall is staying the same at 92. So the point of the wall, it's we're all meeting in that, maintaining that 15-foot buffer is whatever the existing grade is, that's what the wall is meeting, whether it's bottom of wall or top of wall. So the top of wall may look like it's changing and then it just, I'm not explaining this very well, I'm sorry.
So.
Would pictures be better?
So what my, what I believe as a planner is important is that everyone has an idea of what this is going to look like.
Right.
So my concern is, well, I have a few. So first of all, I asked what the height was because I have an idea of what the heights are, but I know that they vary throughout the wall.
Yes.
So, and I didn't, maybe I missed it, but I don't believe I saw where on the wall, you know, I didn't believe I saw.
Where it changes?
Where it changes, what the height is, and I recognize, I think my report even references, it goes from one foot to, you know, a certain height. But I think this is all really important with respect to some of the questions that you're asking about, would the board like the fence, would the board like the trees, would the board not like the trees? I think that some of these things are potentially important, and of course, that's up to the board, but you know, what will this look like?
Right.
Because that's what we're trying to talk about. The purpose of a buffer is to provide a buffer from the adjoining properties. So what is it that's being buffered? It's being buffered is the new building, of course, and then the wall. So I think these things are all important, and I think you perhaps jokingly said this might be easier with pictures, or pictures would be good.
I know.
But I kind of, I actually think that's a.
It is.
To that point, you know, picture, some type of exhibit, and as well as I know that your sign detail is in black and white, I think something showing what it might look like would be of assistance, at least to me. And I'll let the board members speak for themselves, I'm seeing at least one gentleman nod his head, so.
Yeah, I think having a side section, a series of them, as you go down the ramp, so you can see how it changes, and you can see the layout of the fence and the sequence of the fence and to the adjoining lots. So maybe there's maybe three or four side sections as we move from the north to the south. And then combining with that, having an elevation showing the fence laterally, so that you can see how the fence height changes as you go down the ramp, as you were describing it.
I think I would, like, I picture this stuff in my head all the time, but I know I can try to visualize of like, you know, if you're standing in this northeast corner and it's a 5.3-foot wall, that's a little taller than me. And then as you're walking down this wall, it gets shorter. So like, if you're picturing the wall here, as you're moving south, the wall's getting smaller and smaller to where there's no wall, and then for the rest of those neighbors, they don't see any wall because the wall's on the other side, it's on the ramp side of it.
So, I mean, is it possible just to create some elevations, like standing in the middle of the parking lot and looking east, or maybe looking west from the other side of the wall? Looking that entire elevation?
That's what I was suggesting, having an elevation in combination with the side sections.
Yeah.
Cut out, so they can see the sequence of the fencing and the buffer.
Mr. Chairman, and, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on.
Kang.
Mr. Kang, thank you for both your comments, both noted, and the engineer was just confirming with me and asking if we could produce something that might be more informative for the board and for the planner and the rest of us, so you can get a bird's eye view of how the elevations work, the retaining wall, the code-required fence, and the rear buffer. We'll seek to do that with the victorials if necessary.
I think that's important, especially on that side of the property.
Understood. Thank you both for your comments.
Thank you.
I'm assuming parking questions, that's all for the next witness?
Yes.
You indicated lighting will be met?
Yes.
The lighting will be revised to be met?
Yes, sorry. He's gonna hang up a sign at me.
A lot of my questions, I think, are gonna also be for the operator with respect to deliveries, time of day, things of that nature. The dumpster area is sufficient for refuse and for recycling?
Yes.
Typically, I know this type of use has a lot of those large boxes.
Yes, and we worked with what he has at his current facility to make sure he had enough area for what he needed.
Okay. Because that is also on the, I believe, the residential side, although there is the buffer, so you know, we want to make sure there's nothing, that that's sufficient and it doesn't impact the neighbors in any negative way.
You know, stuff flying off the wall?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't have that.
Okay.
And if I may, on the dumpsters, is there a requirement for like additional enclosure around the dumpster?
Yes.
To kind of further block the use?
Yeah, the dumpster, it's not just the pavement with dumpsters, there'll be an enclosure around it.
I'm trying to understand it.
Yeah, I know. It's a striped area that I called out as it, but I'll add a detail, usually it's the same type of fencing that's on the site, so it's all enclosed.
And is there adequate space with your new parking layout, which I also appreciate because it provides more for the buffer opportunity to the adjacent property? Is there adequate space for snow removal and storage of snow if we get a really big snowstorm or something like that? Is that on here? Is that available?
It's not specifically on there. What I know that they're going to do is they're going to put the snow where they can, and if they can't, they're just taking it off-site.
They'll take it off-site.
They'll remove it from the property if necessary, if we get one of those.
They're not taking up a parking space or an extra area, they're just going to remove it.
Okay. I think that's it for me for the engineer for right now. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Mike, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go down the line, members of the board?
No questions.
Okay, I have one question. So would it be possible to produce a rendering of the
east side where we've been debating whether to keep trees or not? That could show if we did, we know that if we.
You want it with trees and without trees?
No, no, if we remove the trees and you have to put up the evergreens, we know what that will be. But would it be possible to show a rendering of keeping the trees and whatever other plantings you would want to do, what would that buffer look like for the neighbors?
Yes.
Along that line?
Yes.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no questions.
I have a question. And this is in regards to storm warning management. I think what you have here is adequate, but I just want to ensure that we're doing as much as we can to protect the neighbors on the east side of the property. So I know you have a catch basin in the northern eastern section of the property there, and I'm just going to assume that we're having a significant storm level event and everything is going to be overwhelmed. So just, let's play along with this scenario for a second. So that catch basin is filled up, and the lower catch basin at the bottom of the ramp on the southern eastern side also starts to fill up. You do have a strip of, is that a French drain? What should we call that?
Trench drain.
Trench drain at the top of the ramp. So any overflow that would go from the main catch basin towards the building and towards the back, towards that ramp, would be captured in that trench drain. So I'm not too concerned about the parking lot if it were to overflow.
Mm-hmm.
But there's that one area where there's the gap in the retaining wall. And since we don't have an elevation, I'm just assuming that the retaining wall, the top of the retaining wall just is level with the soil.
It's level, you have the curb?
Right.
So driveway still, you have a six-inch curb, but that's just a grass area.
So the parking lot has a curb, and then the driveway has a curb?
Yeah.
Okay, so there would not be any instance where the water may go over to the side into the buffer zone area and may work its way through where there is no retaining wall? That would never happen, is what I'm asking.
I can't say never.
Okay.
It's a six-inch curb?
Right.
If we were, if, I mean.
But it's on a slope, so.
It's on a slope, I mean, if you were to say you're gonna get a crazy 500-year storm that drops 10 inches and, but you've got a slope, I mean, it's not, it shouldn't go over it.
But if the water were to go over the trench drain, it would go down the ramp, the catch basin is roughly four feet deeper than the area of the wall that is at grade?
Oh, yeah, no, it's six feet.
Is it six feet?
Oh, no, it's eight feet down.
Yeah, so that'd have to fill up with six feet of water before it starts to spill over towards the east.
And then we're gonna have the sump pump that's gonna be.
No, no, I understand that.
Yeah, no, and you don't want it overspilling into that little area.
Open area, that's right.
Yes. I just can in testimony say never.
Right.
I think it's highly unlikely that would happen.
Okay. Otherwise, I think it makes complete sense, you know, the underground retention, I don't know what you want to call it. Is it a?
It's an infiltration system, the water's gonna go down. I mean, from what I know, we have to do our soil testing, but from what I know in the area from other testing I've done is it's good soil, it percolates, it's, the water's gonna go down, but we are gonna have the backup, the overflow.
Overflow?
So, I mean, we're designing for the storms that we.
Good.
Need to design for.
Okay. And then I do have one other, you mentioned all the other things that I asked, and I appreciate your answers on that, but we do have a new door that opens up to the side yard, and this is to the south. And there's a commercial building, I think it's the nail, the acupuncture building. That door just is gonna open up into a grassy area. I see there's about 10 feet of side yard. How is that going to work?
It's an emergency exit.
It's just for emergency purposes?
It's an emergency secondary exit.
So it's gonna have a concrete pad maybe, or?
I'm sorry?
Is it gonna have a concrete pad there or something?
We'll conform to whatever the standard requirements are for an emergency access.
Okay.
It needs to go the right of way.
It has to go to the right of way? Okay, so probably a little sidewalk to the front?
Right, yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and that's all I had.
Thank you.
Sure.
Min?
I just want to repeat that, the importance of kind of really understanding the buffers between your property and the residential lots on the east side, so we would appreciate to see those side sections and the elevations that were requested previously.
Okay.
Tom?
I have ring for that.
Ed? Okay. Mr. Quinn, how many more professionals will be testifying?
I have our planner, who's gonna testify, councilman, and I also have our client, operator.
Okay.
We have one more expert.
Okay.
When do you go until?
We're gonna go until 10:30. Mike, would it be okay, even if we haven't concluded all the testimony, to give the public a chance to speak on what they've heard so far, and then we would do it again if we had to carry this over?
Yeah, I think that's equitable because the audience has been here since 7:30, and I wouldn't want to deprive them of an opportunity after they patiently waited.
Correct, okay.
Makes perfect sense to me, Mr. Ganiho.
Mr. Cornwall?
Yeah.
For questions only?
For questions only, correct, correct.
Just one caveat, some of the questions have not been answered yet.
Right, to the degree that we can answer the questions based upon the testimony that has occurred.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you.
So, so let us continue with your next witness, then.
We're gonna continue with the witness after you.
Well, did you want to do that, or did you want to open it? I don't know what the anticipated time is for the public.
Okay, okay.
I don't know.
All right.
Colin, what do you prefer? This is your show, not mine, so what do you want to prefer?
I heard comments that we should hear from the public.
No, I was talking about...
I don't agree with that at all. I've heard from two witnesses, architechnical engineer, and we've shared some revisions to the plans. I heard that the board wants to hear, see some other things, so it sounds like we're coming back next month anyway. I mean, we gotta finish the agenda.
I agree.
So, you know, I don't want to put on testimony and then bring back the same witnesses.
I think we should adjourn.
Or to take the same testimony.
Okay.
So it doesn't make sense.
I agree with you, but I don't want to interfere with your presentation either. I respect your presentation, so, you know.
This is about, this is a public forum.
Okay.
I think we should abide by what the board wants and what the public deserves to be heard. I'm happy for that, and the testimony's fresh, and those witnesses are here, just testified, it makes perfect sense.
Thank you.
So I go with both your suggestions.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, what are you recommending?
So, I think at this point, because of time, we want to hear from the public, and we have an agenda to complete tonight. You would adjourn until the next meeting with the remainder of your professionals, and we'd move to hear questions from the public based on the professionals that already testified.
Sounds good, Mr. Chairman.
And then we would conclude, and we'd move on with the rest of our agenda.
Okay. Everybody on the board? Okay, all right, so, thank you, Mr. Quinn. We'll open it up to the public now for questions pertaining to the professional testimony that has been delivered tonight, and this application will be continued in January, where you will have an opportunity to listen to more testimony and come back and ask more questions as well. So I'll open it up at this point to the public, if anybody has any questions based upon the testimony that they've heard thus far. Go ahead, sir.
Step up to the podium, please. You can step up to the podium? Yeah, well, you have a question?
Well, I saw you looking over here, I thought someone else raised their hand.
Sir, if you could just state your name and...
Yes, good evening, members of the board, and Mr. Quinn. My name is Roy McGady. My wife, Georgia, and I own one of the condominium units to the north of the applicant's property. We originally looked at what I think has been marked as A5, the original site plan, and there was no indicated buffer zone on our side of the property, which gave us extreme concern. I talked to Mr. Quinn, who's been nothing but cooperative a couple of times, and he has addressed our concerns, and he's shown that there's gonna be an opaque fence and six-foot-tall evergreens to the north side of the property contiguous to our property. As I understood Ms. Osterkorn's testimony, I think that means it's gonna be six feet wide, which is still, I think, in violation of your code, which requires a 10-foot buffer zone between non-residential and residential. I'm not sure I understand the revised map, which has been marked A4. I don't really see what appears to be a fence on there, but I accept Mr. Quinn's statement to me, that there is gonna be a six-foot fence there, and there's also going to be evergreen trees that are gonna be six feet tall. I'm not sure which comes first, whether the fence is more northern or whether the trees are more northern, so I'm not sure if that can be answered.
Yes, I can answer that. The fence is more northern. Unfortunately, why you can't see it is just because of line weight printing to make the property line look thick and white. It would be that from your condominiums, there would be white-foot fencing, and the evergreens would be on our side between the fence and the curb.
And it would be about a six-foot buffer zone?
Yes.
Still less than a 10-feet required?
Still less than a 10-feet. When I worked with my landscape architect on this, I mean, the evergreens you were proposing were a five-foot diameter one, they'd be, they can fit between the curb and the fence and be able to grow. The reason we're doing it on our side is so the owner can maintain it and keep it. So you guys would have the fence, and then the trees would be above it.
The reason I express the concern is, and the ordinance expresses the same concern, about headlights hitting our property. One of our unit owners, Georgia, she's got the southernmost unit, and she has four windows on the south side, which would take a direct hit from any headlights going in there.
And we were continuing, I mean, that, the southern, so she's here?
No, on our property.
Yeah.
She's a...
She's on this?
Yes.
So, right, so we were having, the fencing would continue and the evergreen for all of that parking, so any headlights, there, I mean, it's the vinyl privacy fence, and then there's an evergreen tree row in front of it.
How tall is the fence?
What?
How tall is the fence?
Six.
Six, thank you.
The other concern was a person pulling in there with perhaps other occupants of the car, leaving the other occupants of the car, leaving the car running, running in for a quick purchase, and the exhaust fumes and gas permeating our property. Will the evergreens protect against that kind of a flow of exhaust?
I can't answer that question. I can't answer that, I don't know that information.
Those are our concerns. I think some of the other members have other concerns. I was just concerned about that, but I think I understand.
But before the next meeting, I mean, I can inquire about that further to know, you know, how far those fumes go, what the tall trees can do. I just don't have that answer right now.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caroline, I have a question about the setback, the side yard setback. I don't see that as a variance. How, I mean, is it a 10-foot required side yard setback? It's a buffer zone between a residential property and a commercial property. And what's...
It says residential zone. I don't, Caroline can double check, but I believe it says residential zone, and the property to the north is not necessarily a residential zone.
It's listed as apartments, I believe, that's the zone, and I would take that as residential.
If it's a residential zone, then yes.
Right, except that the B3 zone is actually, I agree with you, I think the buffer, and I think the buffer is completely appropriate, and appropriately needed, let me rephrase that, but the B3 zone, I think, is actually, isn't that actually called the business and apartment zone, so the apartments are, you know, permitted, so that's part of what's permitted in the zone. So, you're right, my report calls out that it indicates a residential zone on the side or rear, not necessarily the residential use, but we'll confirm that.
What is the setback required? Is there a requirement?
Are you asking about the buffer or the setback?
Buffer, you mean. Considering it residential 10, if you are.
The building setback is 10 feet, and you're meeting that. They're not asking for any variances with respect to the building location.
So the buffer between the parking area and the building...
Is also 10 feet, although the ordinance, to the engineer's point, does indicate a non-residential use abutting a residential zone to the side and to the rear. So to the rear, of course, is a, that's a different zone, but to the side, which is, you know, to next to it, it's all within, I believe, the same, isn't that all within the B3 zone there?
I think that piece of property is listed as apartment use.
Oh, it's a separate zone?
Just bring it up.
Okay, well...
Responding to the comments, that it should be 10 feet, and it's only six foot. So I just need to get clarification on that.
So, well, but respectfully, on that side, the buffer wasn't met at all, and then we received this tonight, so I don't know that we can, I mean, that's something that we, you know, like to, we'll be looking at.
Okay, good.
You understand what I'm saying. We just all got this tonight.
Thank you.
Right, up until, you know, 7 o'clock tonight, we all thought that the buffer wasn't being met on this north side, so then, and, you know, and I respect that they came in with this, you know, with this thing.
Thank you, Caroline, so if you can let us know.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the amendment. Considered A1.
That's an A1 zone right there?
Yes.
Then you do have the 10-foot buffer requirement. If you have, if you have less than 10 feet there, then, you know, you're not meeting it. It's certainly an improvement over what you had initially showed.
It's deficient in size, perhaps.
Garden apartments and residential.
I'm of the opinion that this apartment's permitted on our property, so it's not a traditional B1 or an I1 going to a residential zone. So as such, maybe design waiver perhaps, but not necessarily all the buffer requirements must be compliant. But nevertheless, when you do go to the R1 in the rear, we're fully compliant. The only deficiency is the size of the buffer. The rest of the buffer complies with the landscape screen, landscape screen with the six-foot fence, and all the other necessity, necessary requirements of the buffer zone. So I think your initial point was taken, at least at my end, that we have requirements permitted on my side.
If it's in the, but if that's the A1 zone, to Mr. Deppkin's point, then that's a residential zone.
A1, A1 zone says...
It's the zone that the proposal's on, but we can talk to that, we can talk about that.
Right, but the buffer...
And look, it's a big improvement over what it was with the amendment, and Caroline, you'll opine on this for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to continue, if anybody else from the public would like to speak on the testimony that was delivered tonight? Yes, ma'am.
Diane Fisk, 90 Beverly Road. My property is directly behind the building. I am lot number 13, where the opening is in the retaining wall. So now, anybody that comes in, and I don't really know how to phrase it, but if they come in and make a purchase in the parking lot, it gives them a free access through my backyard, down into Beverly Road, down to Hoffman Park, to do whatever, if they wanted to imbibe down there or whatever, because that's where the opening is.
Okay. Can you address that?
What, can I ask a few questions of the engineer? Chairman, just to respond to Mr. Quinn's inquiry?
Sure.
Thank you. What's the purpose of the opening routine?
It is strictly just because of the grading that happens.
For grading purposes. Behind that retaining wall, again, to answer this Fisk question, what is being proposed on the site plan you developed between her property, lot 13, and the rear of this building?
Landscaping and a six-foot privacy fence.
Okay, will there be access to the rear yards of any of the Beverly Road residents from this Kendrick MacLeod property?
No. Sorry, no.
So, do you have any other questions for the engineer, Ms. Fisk?
The fence is, as it's now proposed, the fence runs along the rear of your property line. So while there's a gap in the retaining wall, if someone were to walk through, there's still a fence there.
I was thinking for safety and security purposes.
Yes.
My other question is with the, and I guess you can't answer to it, would be the access road for the delivery trucks. How wide is that going to be? Because some of those trucks get to be wide, and it runs right along my property line.
I understand the question, can't speak to it 100%, but I do know the, the operator can speak. He owns the same facility and knows the width of the trucks, which is why we designed it for the type of delivery trucks he has, so it's not, it's not too narrow. It's, the width was designed to accommodate the trucks that he has delivered. He's been running this business.
So do trucks and things like that. They're wide trucks.
They're wide. I think we have a 12-foot wide drive, so...
If I may respond, the operator's here, and he'll talk to you afterwards, and testify next month to the board's request, but just, most, if not all, delivers will be by box truck, and he'll give you direct sizes. Their stop will be somewhere between two and five minutes, and they'll pull into the front of the driveway, and the rest will go by pan truck down that ramp.
And if I can say one last thing?
They'll go, they'll only come in once a week, perhaps twice in the morning.
I have some really nice trees, and I've been raking leaves all week, but they are healthy.
You like the leaves.
I'm sorry?
You like the leaves.
It looks very pretty.
You want to keep the trees?
I've liked them for 40 years, I think, on that property.
It's good to know, you like the leaves.
Yeah, and the town does a great job in picking up the leaves, so...
Why not have the leaves? I, okay, we're gonna get some nice pictures for you to see of how keeping the trees with the supplemental evergreens and the fencing will look for you. But that was part of the questions, is like, some people don't like to pick up their leaves, so if you don't want them, but he's trying to keep what he can on his property.
We screwed him out to the curb, town comes through and...
That's nice.
They're straight. They do a good job, but thank you for your thoroughness and your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, sir.
Hello, everybody. I'm Keith Donovan. I'm one of the owners at 100 Kendrick Mac Road. I'm also the president of our association. A lot of my questions were answered. I thought you were very thorough.
Thank you.
I did want to know about the evergreen trees. Are they going to run the full length and cover the dumpster area as well? I didn't get to see the new plan with the six-foot buffer and the evergreen trees. Thank you. Doesn't look like it.
Ish?
Ish, yeah, okay.
I mean, no, that's the best answer, right? That's gonna be in the resolution. I said ish, I'm sorry. So on...
Until halfway.
What, 100, are you to the north?
Yeah, north, yeah, to the north.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The condominium complex.
Oh, sorry, I was looking to the...
Yeah, show them that one.
So the dumpster would be like where, in the back of ours?
Yeah, I mean, no, I can add another one or two. I did this today when we were, we were trying to address this stuff. We have the inlet there, but I mean, ultimately, it's the same six feet, I mean, them coming back another, we were spacing them out, I spaced them out every five feet, because they're five-foot in diameter, but I still think another two could fit. I just didn't want it, there's a...
It's nicer to look at than a dumpster, so.
Okay.
And the other thing, I know some order residents have gotten letters in the mail about rodents.
Oh, that's gross.
So, one thing I want to know, I know this is a wine and liquor store, I don't know if the business owner plans on selling food, too, if there's gonna be maybe some cheeses, or like, you know, things like that, but it's just a concern that I was thinking about with some of my other owners, that, you know, there's gonna be more activity. Hubcap Joe, not much went on for 40 years, so there's gonna be, we're gonna have more activity near our building, and with more activity, we don't know what to expect.
Keith, just to answer your question, he's here tonight and speaks in afterwards. He's gonna testify next month, and he's gonna say that most of his refuse will be recycling from cartwheeling.
Yeah, got it.
But he's gonna have one or two employees there at times, they're not hosting any events. There'll be no garbage per se, and that recycling will come low often because of the only boxes that can be moved out of there. And the garbage dumps will be picked up maybe once as necessary, once every couple of weeks. We don't have that kind of garbage that attracts rodents, and it's all gonna be enclosed, and obviously, we're regulated by the town.
Okay.
So, but he's here, and he'll talk to you shortly.
And Roy mentioned a lot of my other things, and I guess we'll leave it to next month for the rest, but thank you guys for being so thorough tonight.
Anybody else would like to?
I'm sorry?
You can come back up, you can come back up.
Sitting here, it's me again from Beverly Road. It's not possible to close in that retaining wall.
You have to ask them, not me.
It makes it more like a curb, we can connect it.
If you want to do that, it's fine. If there's no, there's no physical purpose or range purpose for not doing that.
Curism, but I mean, connecting it, it just kind of adds an extension of more of a curb, but it can be done.
And the thing is, it's a direct route, you know, from Kendrick Mac Road down to wherever.
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead, ma'am.
My name's Sun Man Lee. I'm one of the owners of the Northern condominium unit. My question is, will there be liquid displays on the windows? As the current liquid store shows lots of, like, all the windows are covered with liquid posters all around. I was wondering, that will be happening in the new building, because it's right next to us, we pass by through with children and everything. I was just wondering how, what your regulations are for the usage of windows of liquid stores?
As far as the codes, borough code is concerned, you're allowed 20% of signage in window spaces, but they can't be, they can't be lit, can't be lit signage.
but they can't be, they can't be lit, can't be lit signage. But 20%, they're very small windows along the property, so it's not going to be much signage at all.
Okay. Yeah, that was, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Holtsunis, 50 Beverly Road. I have a few questions. We know that the, you said it's, the slope is from the southwest to the northeast. With this new parking lot, does it increase the rate of runoff? Or is it, is it better? Is it better? Is it?
Yes.
It is better?
While we're increasing impervious, we're capturing it all. So anything that was the...
Because I know it's all grassy now, so...
Yeah, well, some of it is and some of it's not. So on.
Just before you start, can you revisit your testimony in response to Mr. Atkinson's testimony about the current site and what it provides for?
It provides no drainage, and we're providing drainage. But to your questions with of what would come off of the site, currently, it's grass. So you have this entire grass area, while some goes into the ground. Heavy storms, it runs off the ground into that northeast direction. And this entire parking lot and this building that has roof leaders all go in that northeast direction.
I know that, I know that it's grassy, so I mean, the land absorbs it, and it's a slow, slow run.
Some of it.
Slow runoff. But with this building and with the concrete now that's going to be there, I think it would be a faster runoff.
I would agree with you. If we didn't have any curb or wall or any drainage and everything just went in that same direction.
Okay, so the drainage is going to take care of it.
We're collecting everything. So anything that hits the ground comes, gets collected into storm drainage and brought down into a collection system.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The sump pump discharge, is that going to be into that drainage also?
No, we're looking, there's an inlet at this corner right here, which, but when we come back, now that I know we're going to, I'm going to have that as part of the revised plan to show that we can connect into this inlet that's in the northwest corner for the pump system as an overflow.
What about the sump pump in the building, in the basement?
Same thing.
Where is that going to, how is that going to go?
They would all, the sump pump that we were going to, that we'll have in this inlet will be with, as part of the sump pump in the building that can connect into the back of this inlet.
Okay, that up at the top of the drawing there, you...
It's right here.
Okay, thank you.
On Kendrick Mac. Nowhere, not, not anywhere near, whatever is going to you is not going to you anymore.
Then again, the question was brought up before somebody on the panel about snow removal.
Yes.
And I happen to be living behind the one that's right now. And the problem is the snow removal. A lot of problems with that. We have no drainage and nothing there. But that's why I'm asking now. So how is this snow removal, storage is the problem that we see. And then it melts and it just goes down?
Because they just dump it back here, and then it melts and comes down your hill? Is that what happens now?
Yes.
Ah, I can see how that would be. So now, we have a nice defined parking lot that they will have private, just like private garbage collection, they will have private snow removal. So if it's a quarter inch, inch of snow, and they can just push it along to the edge of the curb, great. If it is something that is going, is accumulating, they will be removing it. They have to do private removal. There is no space to put it, they're not, they're not dumping it over the wall. They have to collect now this drive down here. They can't push it down the drive because that wouldn't make any sense for them either. That they are going to have the proper back hose and plows, and they have to remove it like the, I'm assuming, the apartment complex next door has to do, and that these tight private places have to remove the snow.
Well, these large 15-inch storms, you know, 15 inches and stuff.
They're not leaving the snow and pushing it over the wall.
I just hope that the drainage doesn't get blocked by the snow.
No, no, they would not. They have a responsibility to maintain it. We have to do an operation and maintenance manual that's required by the engineer for the system.
Is there a way of heating, heating that drainage area so that it doesn't freeze? What happens when it freezes?
I don't have an answer to that question.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other things. The entrance to the store, to the main entrance, I was concerned also about cars backing up from the parking area, going to that area where the entrance is. Are you going to put any poles there?
I'm, when, knowing they were coming back, Mr. Atkinson's, we're going to address, like, all of his comments and your planner's comments. And part of that with this revised plan is having a curb coming in. We're just going to have the depress that you need for the ADA access, but it'll have a curb protection.
I think it would be wiser to put in these metal poles.
The bollards.
Yeah, I don't know what they call them. What are they called?
They're called bollards.
Hollers.
But I will be discussing more with the engineer.
And also, because you have a parking spot there, you have two parking spots.
Mm-hmm.
Well, somebody in the, in the one that, close to the entrance, could back up into that, too. So you'd have to have poles on that side also.
Well, technically, no, because if we have the required 24 feet of backup area, just like if you're parking head-to-head in 90-degree spacing in a parking lot, like if you go to Stop &amp; Shop, there's not, there's not bollards between the cars behind you. It's enough parking space for a car to back up here and turn and not hit the cars behind them.
Yes, on backup. But on, on the cars, if you could change to the other, where you show the parking, you have two parking spots that are next to the building.
Yes.
The, the one that's closest to the, to the entrance, that's what I'm talking about.
You mean between those two cars?
Yes.
So those...
Car could back up to the entrance.
Understood. And that's, that area here, we're going to have curbing. So I'm going to have the curbing entrance, and then this sidewalk will have curbing. So this person's not going to be able to back up. And these stalls are spaced, they're longer, that they're the required parallel parking spaces in order to maneuver and get out. But I will be showing that that will be curbing. It won't just be sidewalk there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
On the parking, on the street parking?
Yes.
Well, you still have street parking there. How many parking spots will you have there on this, on street parking?
I don't know.
I think that test...
Traffic engineer.
Oh, you don't have...
We have to stick to what's been...
Okay, because also, I'm concerned if you remove, there's a cherry blossom tree there. Are you going to remove that tree?
It's going to conform with whatever the town requires us to do, but the parking expert will testify to the parking issues.
Okay, but this is not a parking issue. This is the cherry blossom tree.
I understand what you said. Whatever the town wants to do with respect to trees, we're in a direction.
Which tree?
There, there's one tree on the sidewalk.
This one?
The sidewalk area. It's a cherry blossom tree. I know where it is, but I can't...
Well, none of them are, look, I mean, based on, this is an aerial that was taken...
It's not on your map. It's not on your map.
Well, this was an aerial that was taken in May or March of this year. So I see that there's some trees or...
It's near the grassy area. I know that.
Those aren't, those aren't being planted. There's no plan for those to be removed.
Oh, okay, good, good. Okay. Architectural, do we have the architect still here?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, I got to ask you one more question. I just seen it now. The garbage pickup time.
I don't have those. That's the owner. He's going to testify next time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel, we have a, an issue with, we're at 10 after 10. I just want to make sure every member of the public is heard.
Well, let me ask you, who else has questions in the public here? Anyone else? All right.
No, no, no. The, I think the council still has some matters to tend to on the agenda also, so I'll leave it up to you guys.
Paul, could you wrap this up, like, say, in five minutes? I don't have that many questions for the architect, not many. The height is 23 feet and 2 inches, you said?
Correct.
What is going to be the, the height of the mechanical that's going to be behind the parapet, you said?
The mechanical will be lower than the parapet.
Okay. Do you know the height of the mechanical?
It hasn't been designed yet.
Okay.
But typically, they're usually three, four feet at best if they're larger units. Smaller units will be smaller. And our parapet is higher than that, especially around the front corner, the entrance corner.
So how high is the parapet from the base of the roof?
I believe it's like four to five feet.
Okay.
In that front. No, it'll be screened, and we'll, we'll keep the units toward Kendrick Mac Road.
I did have a comment on the, the appearance of the building.
Questions?
And I know you put...
Paul, it's got the questions, the comments.
Paul, it's questions about the testimony. You can do comments.
Yes, yes, it's going to be in the form of a question.
Okay.
It's a comment in form of a question. Okay? In the, the fact that you chose red brick, okay? You want to say why? I know why, but I have to ask you in a form of a question. So tell me why you chose red brick.
It, it was designed to conform and keep with the design intent of the central business district. A lot of red brick, it's a cinnamon brick, so it's got a redder tint. And then the black will be accent for the base and accent trim.
Did you look at any other storefronts in the town to see if we had any red brick with storefronts?
You have many buildings with brick and storefronts.
Well, most of them, would you say that most of them have windows?
Yeah, there's.
Instead of red brick?
Well, no, the storefront would, yeah, brick, but this type of business has a lot of display area inside. They have higher windows to let whatever light in.
Okay. Well, I'm going to ask you in the form of a question because I can't tell you what I feel about it. Okay? And do you think that maybe it looks like a warehouse?
Mr. Chairman, can we get some questions on the testimony?
Yes.
Is there an opportunity to state in comments another term?
Yeah.
I think we deferred this.
You know what?
Questions of testimony.
Yeah.
I would appreciate if we could just...
The building itself, the building itself...
Let me finish, sir. I just want to put this on the record.
You're not letting me finish?
I might, I might.
You're interrupting me.
All right. I'm going to recommend that we end the questioning because we're going to resume next month so that the board can finish its business. So I thank everyone for their testimony. I thank the public for your thoughtful questions, and we'll pick this up next month when everyone is back to continue the testimony.
January 7.
Can you give us a date and time?
January 7, 7:30.
I'll talk to you later.
I'm going to hold this against you.
We'll adjourn until then.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Can we ask that the applicant, all the exhibits that were handed out tonight, could those please be emailed?
We're going to email and PDF the exhibits that were handed tonight. I think we're probably what the most comprehensive thing to do would be to put that with revised plans and get that all to the board 10 days in advance. I think you're in charge of that.
That would be great.
Don't forget about the holidays. Don't forget about the holidays. Yeah.
Christmas, you want a Christmas?
No, I meant New, I was thinking New Year's. I was thinking New Year's, but yes, you understand what I'm saying.
Look, right at giving the holiday, and if, Mr. Chairman, the second one's the final point.
January 7.
If you'd like us to state that property, we can certainly have that done. It's not an issue whatsoever. I know there are other requests from Mr. Kang and others, but we can have that done so it's not for the board to go and take a look at the stuff.
I'll leave it up. I mean, I was at the site. I know how to look at drawings, you know, and I walked the property. If that's helpful for everybody.
We can put four corners of the four buildings. But it'll be a two-foot stake out of the ground.
And maybe a couple, a couple of stakes where the wall is going to be.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely do that.
I think that would be helpful.
Okay. We'll take care of that. We'll communicate to Mr. Dapkin when that's complete.
Okay, very good. Thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem at all. We're going to change it. So we're going to do one submittal of all plans, everything, and everything by PDF. That's what I'm expecting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, so we'll continue?
Hand it out tonight, and then I keep it, yeah.
Get out.
You're inviting everybody left. It's usually the case.
Okay, we're going to continue with the meeting now. So, Mr. Cornavale, you have anything else?
No other business, Mr. Chairman.
Then we'll move to business, buildings and signage. Mr. Kang?
Looking to report, Mr. Chairman.
Regional planning coordination, the mayor has recused himself from that prior application, and, and he's, he had to leave for the night. Master plan, open space, environmental and circulation systems, Mr. Darian?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We had a subcommittee meeting, this was our sixth one, on November 22. We finalized our questions for our Survey Monkey survey. From what I understand, some of the questions are involving ranking and rating, so you're not asked to pick your top question.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir. Yeah, please, if you want to talk.
Close that door.
We're conducting a meeting here. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was talking louder and louder and louder. I was going to start shouting in a minute. The survey asks individuals for their top five concerns. It's not just select five, it's not just select one, so you have to rank. And apparently, that's causing some problems with the survey. So the survey is going to be ready for the public to fill out within the next day or two, I was told, if not definitely by Friday this week. And that's where we stand on the survey.
Mr. Darian, so how are people notified of the survey?
So, there will be a link on the oradel.org website. It's at the bottom, or I think it moves around as other stuff gets added. They can click on that link and go to the survey. We have a flyer that is put together. Gabrielle and the building department did a great job of putting together this flyer. We have a QR code within the flyer, so if you're savvy with your phone, you could use the QR code to take you directly to the questionnaire. the QR code to take you directly to the questionnaire. There's also a link to the ordel.org website and we'll have the dates that it's opened and closed for the survey on the flyer.
Can you also put it on the screen at the intersection of Ordel Avenue? Might as well use it.
No.
That's funny.
I don't want any part of that sign.
It is bright.
That's my personal opinion. But, no, we are also going to post on Ordel residents. That seems like the best place for people to get information. I think there are a few other sites on Facebook. I'll have to do some research. I know some of the committees, the beautification committee, the business committee, right? We could reach out to them also, once the survey is ready to roll. So that won't take long at all. And it'll be open several weeks, from what I understand. I don't know the end date yet, but we'll be open for quite a while. And our architect and his company, DMR Architects, will be doing all the analysis for us. So that is almost complete. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Historical preservation, Mr. Cornavale?
No report.
Old business? New business? We only have, including your packet, the proposed plane and board dates for 2025, so take a look at that. And unless there's any other new business, I'll open it up to the public.
Well, the dates are, is everyone okay with those dates? If they are, then present them to the mayor and council for their approval.
Yeah, I mean, it's always the first Tuesday of the month.
Keep it as it was in the previous years? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, if you could do that, I appreciate it. Okay, we'll open to public. Holtsunis, 50 Beverly Road. On the, on the survey, when you asked a question in there, would you like to have, would you like to have a single-family home, something to that effect? To be able to have two, two, two houses to five units or something? There's a question in there. I'd have to find it to read it to you. I think you shouldn't have even asked that question because anybody that lives in a single-family neighborhood doesn't want to have more apartments. And I think that's really like setting the question there for what you want to come out of it. In other words, yeah, we want more apartments next to single-family homes. That's what it looks like. You know, you're trying to push that by asking that question. The other thing I want to say is about senior citizens. Now, senior citizens, how are they gonna be? Because they don't go on Facebook. We don't have social, what do you call it? Social thing that they do on the internet? I don't even know what the hell they call it. Anyway, I'm a senior citizen, okay? And I think that you should talk to Tina and she could send out the survey to the people that do have internet, okay? But also, you should make it available to people that don't. Because I don't think we should leave out that section of the population because this section of the population, which you're probably part of now, getting there, all of you, are gonna be the wise ones, okay? So we want to listen from the wise ones, you know, from the seniors too. And that's all I have to say on the survey. Now, on what happened here tonight, and the way that the meeting was conducted, I think, Mr. Fledging, you should be more in charge of the meeting because it appeared to be Mr. Cornavale was in charge of the meeting. Now, if you gave him that part because of his position on the council, I don't know. But what I, I didn't like the fact that we didn't have comment after the architect. And when time goes by, people forget what he said. Okay, so when somebody testifies, we should always go and have public comment after the testimony. And I hope you put that in your mind for the next time, so it won't be so bad. Because this is why that happened at the end, because I would've asked my questions to the architect if we had the opening at that time when the architect spoke, okay? And then... Thank you. That's it for tonight, and I wish you all happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and we'll see you next year. Okay, same to you, Paul. I'll close public and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Wrong favor?
Aye.
All right.
...five-mile railway project connecting the city of Lobido in Angola to the Democratic Republic of Congo and Zambia as well. This show of U.S. investment is meant to counter China's increasing influence in Africa, the sort of alternative to China's Belt and Road Initiative. Can you talk about that, China's presence in Africa and where the U.S. stands in relation to that?